All right, being that it's 6:01 and I have a quorum, I would like to call the Groton Board of Education regular meeting or business meeting to order today, September 27th, and once again, it is 6:01. And welcome to everyone. Our first order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance, and I was wondering, Seth, since you're right in the middle of my screen, if you would be willing to lead us in the pledge. I think you're gonna have to.
Yes, I got it, I got it, I got it, there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you, Mark, for the visual. The next is recognition and participation of visitors and delegation. Susan, I wasn't aware of anyone.
I'm just gonna look, we said to raise their hand, so I know Mark is gonna look to see if we have any hands raised. I am too, and I'm just gonna look in the chat box to see if anybody has.
I was just looking for any visitors or delegates, like there's no, there's no special stuff going. Is that correct?
Yes.
Awesome. So with that in mind, I'm going to read us, lead us into our next agenda item, and that's comments from citizens. This is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments, a citizen portion of the board meeting. Citizens in, whoops, excuse me, citizens should be made, should make their presentation, and not from the podium, because we are not at the podium at the present moment. But please make sure that you state your name and address as well. And just for people to know, I've asked Ms. Joan just to kind of keep tabs on either hand raised or something in the chat, and I've also asked Jay White love to to give us, do the five minute with the one minute warning. So if you see his hand raised or finger raised up, that is not that he's testing the wind in his house, but that he is letting me know that there's a one minute warning left to the person, for the person. So at this time, we would welcome any comments from citizens, and I I don't.
Callan Kendricks would like to address the board.
All right, thank you. Callan, are you still here?
Yeah, hi, this is Angel Kendrick. I couldn't figure out how to change it from my son's name to my own name. So I am Angel Kendrick.
Hi.
Hi. So I just wanted to touch base. We go to Northeast Academy. Ryan Chaney had sent out an email basically saying that they were still trying to decide if the open house was going to be virtual or in person. So I guess, I guess, how was that determined? When will that be determined? Will parents have a say? I guess my husband and I are feeling like we would like to see that event happen in person. So.
So Angel, so thank you very much for, and so we're just being dutiful in not responding to you because that's what the charge was. So, but I'm hoping that maybe Susan, when it is our, when it is our turn to respond to questions, that she will respond to that. So if you could hold on for a couple of minutes, that would be, that would be great. And thanks, thanks once again.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Frank.
Thank you. Mary, are you available?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Mary, how are you? Can you please, could you just please give your address for the, for the record?
Sure, 119 Haley Road.
Thank you. So please just state your question.
My question is how registration information is related to the school the child is attending? From the Board of Education, I had registered my child in early August, and her information is not at Groton Middle School yet. There was an incident today that I addressed to, in an email, probably about 30 minutes ago, but I was curious the process since her information isn't there.
Great question. We'll see that, if it doesn't get answered tonight, that someone from the district reaches out to you tomorrow. Is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you.
I see that Allison Schuler has joined us. I'm looking through the chat to see if there's anyone else.
Yep, I am too. Thank you, Susan. Once again, for those of us who are joining us, this is our portion of the meeting where we do love to hear from comments from citizens. This is the part of the agenda, though I will not be reopening our agenda for public after, after this point. So that if you have something that you would feel like would be necessary for the board to know, I would, I would really appreciate that now. All right, I am hearing no further comments. So, excuse me, Superintendent Austin, do you have any information about the open house?
I know that the elementary principals are working together, and because conferences are in October, they're hoping to host those live conferences, giving parents a chance if they would prefer remote to have that. But they really think getting them into the school, meeting the teacher, and having the opportunity to kind of tour the building, visiting, for instance, the PE teacher in the new gyms or in the gyms, and, you know, see all of the other teachers as well, will be a really nice, more personalized way rather than getting too many people in a small space. So they're looking at that and kind of combining that, but I know that you'll be hearing more from your principal very soon.
So is it safe to say?
The other question, I was on the email from Mrs. Frank, and I will look into that first thing tomorrow morning to find out what the problem was, and I apologize. I think because we have both an online component and then a district component, and we've had some power school issues, I will just check on that right away for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Since both of those two comments have been addressed, I'm going to move us on in the agenda, and we're at the Student Representative Report. Isaiah and Allison, it is so good to see you, and this is such a funky way of getting to know the board is through the, through the Zoom screen, and I'm hoping that soon we'll be able to do this in person. But and I will be more than happy to have Susan and, and I meet with you personally, just to kind of go over the Board of Education, sort of what, what happened and what doesn't happen, if that would help you out. But normally or typically, the piece that we, we look forward to at this meeting is just to kind of have you guys update us about what's sort of happening in the school district. I know that both of you are at Fitch, but if you even had elementary news, that would be great, but I don't know who would like to go first. But we would welcome to hear you.
Um, there seems to be a back.
Okay.
I guess if all of us who aren't speaking could mute.
Kim, could you just ask them to?
So Allison, I think you are trying to speak, but we are not hearing you, and there's quite a delay. Um, and so to Rita's point, when you do start talking, if you could just introduce yourselves a little bit to the board and to the, to the group, that would be great. And I, I think, Isaiah, can I ask for you to go, and then Allison? And Allison is saying that her internet is not working. So, but Allison, I'm hoping that you're still on, but Isaiah, if you could, if you could chime in, that would be great.
Hi, everyone. I'm Isaiah Anderson. I'm a junior at Fitch High School, and I don't really have too much to report on right now. I'm kind of just here today to watch the proceedings and understand how these meetings go. I know if Allison wants to add anything.
I think, Allison, it seems like you're still having difficulty. And so if that gets worked out, I will invite you back in just to say hi. Isaiah, have you been, have you been a Groton kiddo from the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. So are, so what are, what are some of the things that you are involved in at, in the district?
Right now, I am a member of the National Honor Society. I play baseball at Fitch High School. I was on varsity last year. And I'm the class president for the junior class.
Oh, just a couple of small, little.
Almost forgot.
Very humble.
Thank you.
And very humble, too.
Ted, I noticed that you chimed on. Would, is there something that you would like to add about the two students?
No, I just, I asked Isaiah to, to come and try this out, and I think he'd be a great addition to the board. He's a fantastic young man, and I think can tell us a lot about the student body. He was a couple of years ago, one of the, the kids who decided they want to take me to the wall. So he's, you know, a great kid, and I think would be, be awesome. I've been trying to text, text him here to ask him if he could talk a little bit about the Spirit Week that's going on at Fitch High School right now. I think that's one of the things. We just had our first day of Spirit Week, and we got, Isaiah, what is it? We got tomorrow is Tuesday, yeah, yeah, Twin Tuesday tomorrow, I think, is, right? Is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Metal Wednesday, and then I can't, I can't even remember off the top of my head now, but the, but obviously Fitch Friday, and then, and looking forward to the homecoming dance at Fitch on Saturday night. So we're looking forward to that. It's an outdoor event this, this year, obviously, but but we hope to have a nice homecoming event for the students. We are just, for the sake of, of COVID safety, we are not doing a pep rally at the end of Spirit Week. We are looking at doing an event before the Thanksgiving Day game, and we're going to be meeting with some students to help us plan with that for that as well. And then looking at maybe doing a more traditional pep rally later in the year if, if safety will, would allow us to do that, so.
Thank you, Ted and Isaiah. Welcome. And and once again, Susan and, Susan and I will try to get both with you and Allison just so that we can kind of talk about the, the function of the Board of Ed, and also sort of what your participation or what, what we're hoping your participation would look like. So stay tuned to be hearing from Susan and I if that's, if that's going to be okay.
Yeah, it sounds perfect.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And once again, welcome to the two of you so very much for your, for your coming tonight, and I look forward to your future involvement.
I just want to say to our student reps that our board really does listen to you and does, you know, acknowledge, we love hearing from our students, and your voice is really heard on this board. So I applaud you for coming out tonight. So thank you.
I introduced her real quick, but I just also wanted to introduce Allison. I know that last year, she actually was the board rep last year, but with everything going on, it was difficult to attend meetings and so on. But Allison, again, is a senior and an awesome addition for here at the board, and I, I hope that they get to know you all much better in the next couple of weeks and, and get involved with the, with the, with the board. So I just wanted to say I welcome them both, because I think they're both great additions.
Thank you, Ted. Rita?
Yeah, I had a question for Ted. Do you still have the bonfire for the, like, outside before Thanksgiving Day game?
We have not had that since my time there, here at Fitch. So again, we, we're getting a group of students together to try to plan out these events. We did the homecoming game and week earlier this year, just so we could have an outdoor dance, thinking that would get much too cold as November comes in to do that. But we wanted to see if we can get a group of students together so we could really plan some nice events, you know, around the different activities that we have going on as we go later in the year. But again, I'm going to let the students really bring up some ideas of what they would like to do, and if they're interested in something like a bonfire, we'll certainly listen to what they have and try to do other events. It's some enjoyable events, but as safely as possible.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move us on to the superintendent's report, the school opening. And Susan, I'm assuming that this report is going to talk about our transportation. Pete, thank you.
So I would say it certainly has been challenging opening up in the last three weeks, and mostly due to some transportation concerns. But I would say that it also kind of came to our attention that on September 7th was the culmination of the Groton 2020. And in that, we had planned to have our Groton Middle School on the top of Fort Hill, which launched and opened last year in the midst of COVID. And this year, at the two prior middle school sites, at the Cutler site, we have Mystic River Magnet, and at the West Side site, we have Thames River Magnet. So that work was really done. It took us a few years. Dr. Grenier and I worked on that to make sure that kids had neighborhood schools, although now that we've gone from 10 elementary schools, you know, at the beginning of the decade to down to five, it's certainly those neighborhoods had to grow to encompass all the students. And then we also, as part of this plan for excellence, equity, and efficiencies, we were looking to have five elementary magnets, all elementaries magnet. So parents would have not only a neighborhood school, but also a choice. And so we ran our first lottery. We had online registration. We had a lot happening all at once. And then, you know, there were COVID protocols that we're still dealing with. But one of the biggest challenges, I think, this year was with transportation. We had new routes because of the two-tiered system, and because we were looking to make sure that we were able to get our elementary magnet schools to and from school in a timely fashion. And also being able to utilize our International Baccalaureate campus at the top of Fort Hill to its full potential. And so that has, work has begun, and I have to say, a shout out to Sam Kilpatrick, who's on the line, because he is, has overseen this transportation, as has Lon, Tom Lonsdale, who's helped us with the TransFinder company in the routing, and also working with STA very closely and their leadership to ensure that they were doing everything they could do to secure more bus drivers, and we were doing everything we could do looking at the routes. So we really did have a shortage of about 10 bus drivers daily in the past three weeks, five in the initial, and then three to five on a daily basis. They have signed off on a contract, and I think we have several bus drivers back. I could feel the difference today just in, you know, getting the kids to school on time better, and then getting them picked up on time and getting home. So I'm always the last one to get the call when the last child is dropped off, and I don't leave the office until I know. So Sam's very good about giving me that information, because that's really, safety and security is a concern. Our goal is really to have two students per seat in a bus, especially for our secondary kids. And, you know, with some of the younger children, we can fit three to a seat without going all the way up to full capacity. So just know that we're really on it, almost on a day, on a daily basis at least. And we certainly have gotten good feedback from parents, and I try to respond as soon as I get their emails. I've had parents come in to see me. And, you know, we've really worked on several specific issues that have really interrupted the flow. But today, I have to say, was a better day. And I have to be honest with you, these three weeks have really been challenging. They've been challenging on our families, our students, our staff, our teachers. Everybody has gone beyond the call of duty, trying to make this work. And I would say we have a lot of families that are still driving their children and may into the unforeseeable future for health reasons and all other kind of reasons. So we're just trying to work with the police department as well to make sure that lights are working and that we have our crossing guards everywhere, and that it is really much smoother into the future. I don't know if Sam wants to add to that, but he certainly has been noticed. He is visible. He's there. Phil and I tried to get out too, to, to monitor it and to see firsthand what's happening. But Sam, do you have anything else to mention about transportation?
Yeah, first of all, we've been looking very, Tom and I, along with Dr. Piazza, have been looking very closely at especially the middle school, because that seems to be the choke point for departures in the afternoon. And the middle school has really made the special efforts to really move that up and get the kids on buses much quicker, and some of those longer runs out earlier, which has really helped dramatically. I think I texted Susan today at about 5:15 today to say that the last student finally got home at about 5:15 today, which is a big improvement over the last couple of weeks. We also, this morning, when I stopped by STA this morning, I found out that we had three, three drivers return to STA today, and we expect another one tomorrow. So we're starting to get people back. There are a couple of people out with medical issues too that'll be coming back soon too. So as we pick up these drivers, it'll make it much easier on, on the drivers that have been coming to work on a daily basis. One, one of the things that we've had to do, the STA is instituted, is if, if a bus isn't running that day because of a lack of a driver, they've actually sent out other buses to pick up kids at different sites. If Bus 12, for instance, is in the area where Bus 16 normally would be, they might actually ask that bus driver to go by and pick those kids up to try and get them into school on time. So there's been quite a bit of that going on, and as of today, that was a lot less than it has been in the past couple of weeks. So Tom.
And also better communication with us. STA is notifying us as soon as they know there's a missing driver. And Joyce is, you know, at her home up at eight, six o'clock in the morning, making sure that we're getting school messengers out to families so that they know what's happening for the morning and afternoon because of any bus driver shortage.
Yep. Those, those calls to the parents are really helpful to get their day started on the right foot, for sure. And of course, Tom Lonsdale and Jenny Aquino have been really working hard. We, we get changes to bus routes on a daily basis, and which makes, again, makes it difficult for bus drivers too, because they have to check their run every day. Anytime we add a kid to a bus, whether they moved into the area or somebody's left, or may need to change to a different bus for one reason or another, it changes that entire bus route and it changes times for everybody down the line on that bus route. So while it's a little bit confusing, the, the time is not a great change in time, but it's enough to make parents get concerned at times. So we've taken a lot of phone calls, a lot of parents concerned. One of the things I always try and remember is that but there was a funeral service for my, my first bus driver in Groton. My first bus driver actually drove, drove a carryall van. And she, there was a funeral for her this weekend. And so I like to remind the drivers that they're a very important person in, in a child's life. And so you want to be that person that you're remembered some 60-some years later, I can assure you that. And most of our bus drivers are that way. I think that's about it for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sam.
I'm going to recognize Liz and then Rita.
Sam, I have a couple of questions for you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Sam, did you say that the last middle school student didn't get home until 5:15 this evening?
No, that was the last elementary kid that got home at 5:15 tonight.
And they're leaving at what time?
They get out at, the buses are usually rolling out of the elementary schools right around four o'clock.
I thought. If they could get there more closer to 3:30, that would really help.
But I thought that what you, what we had first heard was that no child was going to be on a bus, even from the length of, you know, the long, the, the farthest way was going to be no more than 45 minutes.
Our, our goal, our, our goal has always been to keep them under an hour, and we're still working on some of those. There, there are still changes that we're making, moving kids from one bus to another to, to balance them out numbers-wise, and also to get some of these longer magnet runs. If a kid lives up in North Pleasant Valley Road, for instance, and goes to Mystic River, that, that bus takes a long time to get all the way across town, making a few stops along the way too. So those are, those are generally the most outlying students on, on a magnet run that, that run that late. But we're still trying to get those under an hour, and certainly 45 minutes would be preferable.
Okay, because that's what I was, I thought that was what we were expecting, and I was just concerned to hear that we have small children on a bus for over an hour, and I think that's just not acceptable. And I know that you don't think it's acceptable either, Sam. I'm not sitting there going, being critical. I just, it's a concern that I have, and I know that's a concern of yours.
And we're all working on that together.
I, and I totally appreciate that. Do you expect this to straighten out pretty soon? I mean, are you expecting this to, you know, to finally get some permanent bus routes with, before the end of the first quarter? Or, you know, like within the next week or two? Or what do you, what do you, is it too?
It's been improving, it's been improving on a daily basis, and I think we get another week into this. I think we're going to be running a lot, a lot smoother as we, as we move along here. There are always going to be, there are always going to be some problems with buses, you know, bus drivers are, are in there very early in the morning. So if you don't get the call, some of them roll out there at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning. So if you don't get the call until 5:30 or 6 o'clock, it's difficult to get substitute drivers and stuff. So there may still be some issues that we run into, but they will be much less than we've been having in the last few weeks, for sure.
I know that STA has reported to us, their management, that they are really looking for bus drivers, and they've secured a nice package for their bus drivers. So anyone who's listening in who might think this is a good idea, I was talking to Bob Ross, who's the Executive Director of Military Affairs, and he actually was a bus driver during his college days and said it was like a super job. So I suggested that they go out to some of our colleges and, you know, send out the flyers, because we're really in very big need, and they will provide excellent training for these people.
Yeah, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to tell you how much they're going to be paying their drivers, but it's a very nice number, and people that are looking for a part-time job, it's, they would be well compensated for a part-time job like that. A difficult job, but well-paid, I think, for that job.
Thank, thank you, Sam. Liz, I missed your questions for the transportation. Got the answer?
I just wanted to say that the lady whose funeral was this weekend was also a past faculty member, member at Fitch High School, and she was my teacher at one point, and she was my colleague too. So is it appropriate to say who it is?
Sure.
Dot Eames. They don't make them like Dot Eames anymore. She is wonderful. Loved her, and she was awesome. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Rita?
My question is Susan had in her board notes that first student can no longer cover our athletic runs. So Mark Romano has sent the schedule to STA, who said there are drivers who are requesting to pick up these extra runs. The tricky part will be for away games played at 3:00 PM when we need buses for elementary runs. I didn't realize we contracted with two different bus companies, so I was wondering, Sam, if you could give me some clarification? And how is this going to work for athletics after school?
Yeah, no, we have a contract with STA, but in, in our contract, if, if they're not able to fulfill transportation for. But uh, in, in our contract, if, if they're not able to fulfill uh, uh, transportation for uh, outside work. Like uh, athletics, some things like that, we have the right to, it's right in the contract to go out to a, another server. And see if we can get somebody else to do that. So Ken reached out to First Student and they were agreeable to servicing us on, uh, for some of those runs. Uh, and, and then uh, they determined that they couldn't do it here at, uh, the last uh, couple of days. And STA has now um, with more drivers coming back, are able to fulfill those, uh, those runs now. And those are overtime runs, so that, that's overtime money for those drivers too. So it's uh, it's really important that we get uh, our neighbors and our friends uh, that opportunity. Uh, versus bringing in another group when, whenever we can.
I have to say Mark Romano was very resourceful because there was one group of students, the girls swim team. That wasn't getting a ride back and forth to the pool. And he reached out to Parks and Rec and they happen to have a van that can fit twenty-five students. So our girls have a ride. So I have to thank him too publicly.
But I, I still don't, I still need clarification about that sentence about first student can no longer cover our athletic runs. Did we have first student cover them and now we're going back to STA?
Well, first student could no longer cover them. Around the state, they were.
Why, why were we contracting with first student when STA is our contracted bus?
Because they could not fulfill that part of the contract at that.
Just this spring, just this fall?
Yep.
Oh, so just this fall?
For a short period of time, they were unable to fulfill that.
Okay, well, it's not clear in the message that we got. It was sort of ambiguous and I was just curious about our contracts with the bus companies and. Okay, so now it's gonna get straightened out and STA will be doing the athletic runs.
That's right.
Thank you.
It's helpful if I unmute. Susan, if you would continue on with your opening, please.
Okay, so that's really it for the opening, but I would like to be able to move on to the state data report presentation. So I'm gonna have Tom. Get us on to the presentation. And some of this information you've been receiving from me in the board notes. Um, we were able to, to gather some more information to share with the board. And um, I'm gonna go through the data that we have and outline some of the things that have been mentioned in the board notes. And some, and the data chart that I've shared with you. I shared with you this whole presentation when we kind of wrapped it up. Um, so you do have it now and we can always go back to it. I usually like to share the data several months in a row. And then the principals can speak to what their data teams are doing with the data. So this isn't a one-shot deal. This is usually unfolds for us and I can share with you um, parts at a time. So this is the Sback Sumative Assessment, which we test our third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth graders. In both ELA, English Language Arts and Mathematics. And. This was really coming straight from the Connecticut State Department of Education. And their recommendations were to have special consideration and analysis because of the pandemic. I actually was able to serve with a group of six other superintendents and the performance office directors. Around how this data gets shared, how we utilize the, the data the best way. And understanding the many variables that go into this. And so, you know, when we, when we look at this, we know there are both similarities and differences. In the way that um, we've tested the kids back in two thousand eighteen and nineteen with the last Sback. Um, Sumative Assessment. And then this year, spring of twenty twenty-one. And there are some similarities. We have the same test blueprint. We have the same bank of test items. Um, we have the same in-person testing protocols. Um, but unfortunately, there's many more differences than similarities. So we not only um, tested people in person with those protocols. But we set up new protocols for the remote kids who couldn't come in and to test them remotely. Um, I was really pleased with the way that our administration really um, worked with families to get more students in. Even if they had learned remotely on those Wednesday afternoons, they often would be able to come in. To do some of the practice assessments and the Sback assessments. So as you remember, we were fully remote from mid-March to mid-June um, in twenty twenty. And we also um, had remote in a variety of ways and degrees. You know, in our own district and across the state. And it was really beyond our control in most ways because of the pandemic. Um, in addition, some students tested remotely. Um, and then there was the new construct for testing um, in person. Or in person we tested and then remotely we tested. In-person school varied, didn't look the same from school to school or district to district. Um, there were new instructional approaches that emerged. We had to flip over to hybrid learning and remote learning right away. A lot of professional development went into that. And then um, there were also, you know, admittedly, there was a sense of um, stress, anxiety. Both in students, families and staff. So we just kind of have to recognize those variabilities. So this slide really is a slide that showcases the state of Connecticut overall matched cohort. Match cohorting is really hard to do at the district level, but the state was able to provide us. And I don't know if you can make that slide any bigger, Tom? It's a little fuzzy cuz it's really cut right out of the state document. Um, but it looks at. It looks at um. The ELA results on the left-hand side and the math results on the right-hand side. And the color coding goes along with um, blue being from the eighteen nineteen testing. And red being um, those who are proficient at twenty twenty-one. So the first box that you see on your left-hand upper corner um, side are students with high needs. And if you notice that um, for those who are fully in person, they exceeded um. You know, the, or they had less loss than the hybrid or the remote students. So um, you can see that we've taken a dip in ELA with students with high needs. And we've done it with, without high needs. So there is gonna be gaps that we have to fill and we know that. And that student data, student by student, will be looked at individually by teachers of those students. And by schools to determine what gaps are needing to be filled. On the right-hand side, um, math did even less well. So math um, with students with high needs, you can see um, you know. The twenty twenty-one state data um, versus the eighteen nineteen state data. Is um, definitely um, lost ground. So our idea is to really accelerate learning and move it forward. But at the same time, provide the tutoring and the extra support for our kids to be able to fill the gaps. And then, of course, on the right-hand bottom, it's math students without high needs. And um, as you can see, in all four quadrants, the students who are fully mostly in person. Lost less ground than the other kids. Um, next came the hybrid students and then last of all, were the fully remote. However, I have to say, you'll notice in Groton's data, that wasn't always true. We do have some kids who were fully remote. That means they were zooming in with their teacher and, you know, be instructed by our teachers in Groton. And they actually fared pretty well. So it wasn't, even though that we've made these generalizations in the state, it doesn't hold true for every single case. So there were some children who actually made growth in, you know, all these categories. So I think we can switch now. So I asked Tom to look at the actual numbers. Because, you know, the larger a talent pool you have in data, the more accurate the data results are gonna be. So when you look at fully mostly in person, there were only thirty-six students um, who were tested that were fully mostly in person. Which was like close to two percent of the population. With the hybrid, you're looking at closer to seventy-nine percent of our population. So that's the group that we were looking at, you know, mostly. And then fully remote was closer to twenty percent of our student population. And these were all the results of students who tested in person. We don't have the results of students who tested remotely. The state is really doing more verification. They felt like there were some um, inaccuracies to that. And so they're still looking into that. And we wanted to know the range. So when we, we looked at all of the grade levels to see, you know, the third through eighth graders in ELA and in math. We wanted to see what the range of scores would, so we could look at the shape of the data. And I think it really identifies the variabilities in this past year. If you go all the way to the right-hand side, we had some of the lowest scores. Or the lowest numbers of proficiencies to the highest numbers of proficiencies. And then if you look back fifteen, um, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, you can kind of see that the ranges grew. Um, kind of like stair steps. Um, and then, of course, this year, there were, it's just a wide range of, you know, levels of proficiency. Being three and four. So we're gonna take a look at English Language Arts first. Um, I like the way Tom designed this graph. The green line is what was happening in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So it gives you kind of um, the average, I guess, of ELA students without high needs. Connecticut is the blue, Groton is the red. Um, and you can see that we are under, just under the Connecticut um, average. Um, for students without high needs in ELA. Um, fully remote are actually our remote students who are fully remote. Being taught by our teachers did a little better than the state average. And almost as well as they had done back in eighteen nineteen. And then the students with high needs, the students with high needs in the hybrid model did actually better, performed better. Than the Connecticut average and the ones who are fully remote did even better than that. So that was good to see whether it was the support that we were giving. Um, you know, from teachers and tutors and interventionists and special educators. Um, you know, when we talk about students with high needs, I should have said this right up front. Those are our students that are receiving special ed services. They might be so, receiving EL services, English language learners. Um, and they might be students who have lower socioeconomics. And they put those kids all in one group and they don't disaggregate that all the way. So those are those students when they call with high needs. And then there's the math and this is students without high needs. And Connecticut fared better than Groton in the hybrid model. You can see where we were in the green line and that's where we want to get to and better. So even though this year showed some, you know, lower growth results. We want to push ahead and make sure that we get back to better than normal and make some growth here. And then, of course, on the right-hand side, you see the fully mostly remote. And our remote students did a little better than the state average. Without high needs. Here again, these are students with high needs and our students with high needs outperformed the state students without high needs. With high needs in both the hybrid model and the fully remote model. And then the NGSS, I was really pleased because while we, we felt there was a, a big focus on English Language Arts and Mathematics. We didn't forget about science or social studies and some of the other areas. And you can see that um, the students who take the science assessment, the next generation science standards assessment. Are fifth graders, eighth graders and eleventh graders. So when we averaged that group, the Connecticut um, hybrid students without high needs was at sixty-six point two percent. Where the Groton students without high needs were at sixty-eight point two percent, very close to where they were in eighteen nineteen. And the fully remote students superseded their growth or where they were a couple of years ago. So that was good news for science. And then when we looked at the students with high needs, um, you can see the green line where they had been. You can see that the hybrid students in Groton, um, students with high needs did better, performed better than the average Connecticut. Students and then also remotely, they did better than their counterparts in the state. So um, you know, that kind of tells a story, shows a picture. But um, as we move forward, and that's gonna be this next slide, the next steps are really important. So students' results will be sent home to families next week with a letter explaining this in as clear a language as we can. Um, school data teams will analyze individual student data. They've already started that. Um, and they've started to form their SRBI groups for the kids who need. Beyond the core instruction, differentiated instruction in the core, extra tutoring. Using our interventionist to do additional teaching for our kids. Um, so the schools will utilize the student data to determine SRBI needs. And by filling gaps through teaching and tutoring, we'll even have after-school, beyond the school day. Um, you know, opportunities for kids. And then the district data team meets October eighteenth and will be analyzing, we've already begun. But we'll be analyzing as an admin and teacher team to look at the data from a district point of view. And disaggregate it in different ways to understand it better. And then the district will also utilize the Connecticut State Department interim assessment block um, test. And we've already have a pacing guide that teachers are looking at to determine how we're gonna use these best. The bigger blocks, these interim assessments usually cover multiple standards. And usually three topics in math or several areas standards in literacy. So we're thinking about three or four of those per year to really help teachers form um, good decisions with their instruction. And give us more information about our students. Then they have what they call focus in interim assessment blocks, which are short and sweet, like ten, twelve questions. And those really coincide with our units of study in both ELA and math. So they could be used as an end unit assessment and that will give us more information as well. And help us to gauge how we're doing. So those are some next steps. I know that um, we'll, we'll definitely have our principals come and, and talk to you a little bit, like we've done in the past. But as I've said, the variability of the data makes it really difficult and challenging to do any real kinds of comparisons. This was about the best I could do in seeking some kind of a comparison and then comparing it to performance in the past. And the more I dig into it and work with my data team and Tom and Phil and the whole group. Um, you know, whatever we are able to gather, we will certainly share with the board. And anything that we've been able to do and do successfully throughout the year, we certainly will share with you too.
So the next, I, I, I'm excited that we finally got data. So thank you very much. It was, it's been, it's been a long time since the board has been able to, to look at that. And um, uh, we're looking forward to that continuing. Um, the, the Assistant Superintendent report, I don't see him on.
He's actually at an NYPD conference, but I've got Peter here and I've got Dr. Ackerman here. And Peter came to talk a little bit about the revision of the electives from the middle school. And he's already met with the um, the curriculum, Board of Ed Curriculum Committee.
All right, um, I am gonna recognize Jay and then Rita.
Yes, hi Susan. I just wanted to know, um, are we actively utilizing uh, some of the ESER funds for tutoring starting now? In other words.
Oh, we've, yes, absolutely. We've been doing it over the summer. We, we didn't miss a beat with it and we're continuing and planning after-school opportunities as well. But their SRBI structure really took place from the beginning of the school year to really identify kids who needed support.
Okay, so, so students are individually being met where they need to be met by.
They're gonna use this data for that reason. That's right.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Rita?
Um, yes, when you report out the data to us and um, come.
Um, yes, when you report out the data to us and coming up in the future, could you please provide information how we compare to our DRG, to our DIRG and also our area towns? And not just proficient, but I'd like to know those that are performing, how many are performing beyond proficient? Because proficient is just proficient.
Well, proficient is three and four. So those are your, your students that are at the highest level.
Right, but then there's above that.
No, that's it.
They're only doing proficient now. They're not doing the category that is above.
There, there is no category above the three and the four.
And then, and then how many are below? And what, and what are the steps you'll be doing?
So it's a little more difficult to compare. I, I've talked about that in my board notes quite a bit. And I introduced that here. There are just so many variabilities that you can't really compare a Groton to another school that hasn't had hybrids. So if you have school districts that have been full in-person, there, you can't compare because they're two different.
I, I would believe though that, you know, just do it to the ones that were hybrid. But I'm not so much interested in, I mean, I'm even looking at the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen scores and so forth. I mean, we are still below the state average. No matter how you look at this, this year and last year, we're below the state average. So we, you know, that's what I think is so important, you know?
Well, I don't think you're, I don't know if you're reading that correctly, not in every area. No, that's not the state average, Rita. That is where Groton was in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. That's what we, that was Groton's score. Two years ago. That's what we want to get back to, the green line and beyond.
And beyond, but I still would like to see where the state.
Well, so the state is the blue with and without needs, and the red is Groton. So they're side by side. Tom and I worked really hard to try to make this make sense because it's not the most sensible kind of data we've looked at. So I, I agree.
We don't have the state from before. We only have Groton and the green line is Groton. We still don't have what the state scores were before.
Well, that could be another colored line. And we've all, we've been pretty much above the state throughout my time here.
If I could,
At least the past couple of years.
Oh, sorry, Susan, if you don't mind, I can kind of add to that. I'm happy to share that information with the board. I, I don't want to go on record, but I believe in almost every category Groton was above the state average. So it didn't make sense for me to add that line. But we certainly can add that in. And just to go back to kind of your original question about comparing us DIRG into surrounding towns, it is very difficult just because of the amount of variability. So just so everyone understands, you know, the determination for hybrid is anywhere from between twenty-five and seventy-five percent of days in person, which is a huge range. So we have some district or some towns where, you know, the students were in seventy-four percent of the time, but they're considered hybrid and others where they're in twenty-six percent of the time. And also, you know, Groton happened to have almost eighty percent of its students hybrid. Other towns were, were very different in that break, in that breakdown. So it is difficult kind of to compare apples to apples. We certainly can do an apples to orange comparison if you guys want to do that. Happy to do that. But, you know, I, I'll be honest, like Susan and I really did look at this data and try to find a good comparison to be able to show you guys one that we felt was, was truly accurate and something we could really compare ourselves to. And we, we didn't find that. We, we looked at every, you know, town in our DIRG and tried to find something we felt was going to be accurate. But we certainly can have that discussion and comparison apples and oranges if you guys want.
Well, and I think what we need to do is meet with the district data team too, to see what questions derive from there, to see if we can't, you know, dig a little deeper.
Right, and I'd really be interested to hear from the principals.
Yeah.
They always have the best insight.
They do, they really do.
Thank you.
All right, so I want to make sure that I have not, thank you Jay and Rita for your patience with me. I don't see anyone else asking for a question. So if we can move on to the Assistant Superintendent's Report presented by the superintendent.
Well, actually, I'm going to ask Peter Bass to, to do a little talking. I think he's come to us. And he, you know, has been intimately involved in really looking at our, the middle school schedule and working on it and making it, you know, tighter and a little easier to navigate for our students and our teachers. And through that, we had some adjustments to make with the magnet dosage curriculums, with our unified arts between them kind of finally coming due to, to start this work, the art, the music, the PE, the health. So he's going to share with, with us. Are you there?
I'm here. My, my question to, to you Susan, to the board chair, is this the most appropriate time for me to speak? Because I see that on the agenda, this comes up in some form or fashion two more times. Once under committee reports, subsection B, and then once under action, action items, section eight, number five.
I think if you could just do the general overview now, and then Dr. Ackerman may have some information to add further in the meeting, and then it'll be time for the board to vote.
Andrea?
My, uh, my plan for this, Peter, was I know how thorough you are. So my plan for my report, report on the committee section is, I already heard that.
Okay, fair, fair enough, Dr. A. That's great. Well, good evening, everyone. So as, as Susan mentioned, there were some things that we need to tighten up. You know, as we prepared for rotten middle school, we did not envision, we did not predict that we did have a pandemic. So we had the building of a new school, bringing two faculties together, and, and then the pandemic. So that when we went out in March, our, our, our ability to get together and, and work through some of these curricular issues as we developed a new schedule really went out the window. So as, as we entered the school year, just over a year ago, there were some things that were unforeseen to us with regard to the schedule and actually how some of the rooms worked. And as I'm sure that the, the Mr. Giordano and, and Mr. Wheeler can attest, it's really not quite the same until you actually step into the building and see what you have. So there were some, some things that we had to put in place in the short term last year with regard to some electives. And, and some were based upon things that we did both at West Side and at Cutler as magnet electives, which really fell within that C block or that Wildcat block and built upon those. Others had to do with, with expanding upon units that were in PE, for example. But then really, we, we need to expand them out to a more of an elective course that was not going, that was going to stand alone from the PE classes. So we realized that in an ideal situation, this is not how we want to do business. And we had a little bit of catching up to do over the summer. So we had many teachers get together and work on physical education. We, we had three electives that we worked upon. They were strength and balance for the seventh grade, fitness in the eighth grade. And we need to update our dance elective, which we had at Cutler, but we need to update it from a quarter to a semester. We also, we also had implemented some study, study skills classes, which have to do with our NYPD. And they were the ATL Skills class for grade six, Calm the Chaos in grade seven, Strive for Success in grade eight. Similarly, in music, we had electives, which expanded from things that we were doing within music classes or with magnet electives. And they were world drumming, grade seven and eight, guitar, grade seven and eight, and music technology, also grade seven and eight. Then we had the STEM and computer science. We needed to expand upon our curriculum that we had for Multimedia One. And since we had Multimedia One offered once, it created a lot of interest amongst our students who wanted to continue that area. So we developed Multimedia Two and wrote that curriculum as well. Finally, we updated the art curriculum to, to be, to, to show that it's based upon national standards. So we brought that up, up to snuff. So a, a lot of work went into that. And I want to thank the teachers and Dr. Piazza, Kathy Wilson in particular, for, for their collaboration and leadership in this area.
Any questions from the board? How exciting, like what cool electives that we're offering our middle school students. That's really cool.
Thank you.
If there's, oh Jay, I'm sorry.
Since we didn't get any details on this in the packet, I, I, I just want to understand, this is mainly changing the length of the courses? You had mentioned like from, from a quarter to a semester. Are, are any of these brand new electives?
Yes, we actually have, we have, what, what, let's say brand new. We, we did start ATL Skills last year. That was brand new, really helping students learn the skills they need to effectively learn. Calm the Chaos was something that we had as an elective at Cutler previously, but we'd expanded it now to be a semester course. Similarly, Strive for Success was a new one last year as well. Another NYPD course for grade eight. The others, for example, the, in physical education, Jay, we had strength and balance, the, these and fitness. Those two were based upon units that had been previously approved within the PE curriculum. However, we now have gone beyond just units within the length of the PE curriculum and have, have made them true electives, standalone electives. Dance, we updated from a quarter to a semester. Drumming was something that was taught within music and is now a true PE elective, I'm sorry, musical elective. The same is true for guitar and for music technology. So those were also units of study within the music curriculum. But now we've, we've made them standalones. Multimedia one and two, Multimedia one actually started previous to Groton Middle, but needed to be updated. And, and we needed to, to come up with the next step for Multimedia One, which is Multimedia Two. Art, that was completely just a, an update, a revision from what we had previously.
Okay, so the, for the new courses, the curriculum committee has already reviewed all this?
Yes, the curriculum committee, we met in July with the curriculum committee to, to play, to share our, our proposal, which was approved by the curriculum committee. And we came back early this month to share what we had and, and get their feedback and make some adjustments.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all outlined in the curriculum minutes and the curriculum agendas. But if we come to a situation like this, again, I'll just add those minutes to our board pack. That might be helpful. How about that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Jay, thank you for asking that question because it just led to a process and cleaning up a process. So thank you. If I'm not, if I'm hearing, Peter, thanks very much for your leadership and sharing the information with us. Andrea, I'll just let you, if you have any comments, you can make it during your curriculum. But as Peter announced, we are going to be having a, a motion on that later on in our agenda. If we can move to Ken Knight, that would be dandy.
Hi, everybody. You will see on attachment number one, we are currently trending to be actually seventeen thousand one forty-four over, over our budget of seventy-seven million four thirty-eight zero nine zero. There's three main components of that number. We are currently trending over in, in salaries. And this is due to a combination of we increased a, a speech pathologist position from a point six to, to a full. And, and you'll see why when I get down to purchase services. And we also had to add a teacher to cover another teacher that's, that's on leave for the year. So that increased salaries, we do have an offset to that. There were retirements in both the maintenance and the technicians, which will be replaced at a, at a lower rate. So overall, we're currently trending with salaries being seventeen thousand over, over our budget. In benefits, we are also, we're all over budget there. That's due to some retirement severances that got paid out this year. There was one that was supposed to get paid out last year that, that we didn't get all the paperwork for. So we paid it out this year. And then a, a couple of para that, para ones that retired in the year. That's offset by a projected decrease in our unemployment expense. That's decreased, expected to go down, especially from last year in all the activities that happened. But we don't anticipate needing the entire amount for this year. So overall, for benefits, we anticipate being over twenty-seven thousand nine sixty-one. In purchase services, we actually feel we're going to be under budget because the aforementioned speech pathologists that we increased to a one point O is going to alleviate our need for a consultant that, that came in and gave us those services at Mary Morrison. Now at the bigger schools, the schedules align better so that we can bring that, that, that in-house and not have a third party helping us with that process. So we anticipate being under budget by twenty-eight thousand. The other lines are, are near or, or at budget. And so overall, where, you know, like I said, we're currently trending to about seventeen thousand over budget.
Any questions? For Ken? Hearing none? Oh, Liz, sorry, Liz.
That's all right, Ken. Do you see this to be a trend that's going to be continued? Or do you think with this will eventually shake out?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm hoping, it's, it's early in the year. Out of, there are a lot of things to come that we don't know. Our, our magnet and special education placements, those are big numbers and we haven't gotten anything in yet. So we don't know where we're going to land there. We are also, our health insurance reserve, which we'll talk about in a second, we're actually still under where we thought we were going to be. So there is some good news there. So it, it, I, I think from a salary perspective, I, I think that's where we're going to end up, somewhere in that range, very close to what we budgeted. And it'll depend on some of these other things to see, see where it might end up. But it's going to be a, a close year.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
So Ken, if you want to talk about the insurance?
Yeah, so we got the health insurance claims report for July. And it's still showing where we're trending to just where we were at the end of last year. I don't know if you recall, but we were around eighty-five to eighty-seven percent under, under budget. And for July, this is attachment number two, we're, we're still trending in that same way. We, we anticipated that, that some of the postponed procedures and visits that they, they may start to come in, but that hasn't materialized yet. I still anticipate that August and September might be higher than what we, you know, budgeted. But we have that in the health insurance reserve. We're prepared for it. And so if this continues, that, that's good news, of course. But it's, it, it isn't trending quite the way we anticipated. It's a little, little bit better, which, which is, which is good.
Any questions about the insurance report? Jay?
I, I was looking at, at the same period last year. And obviously that was at about forty-five percent of budget. So we did save a, a significant amount. And so I, I guess August is going to be really indicative of how much of that we lose ground on. But also, a few years ago, we, we did a package for early retirement. I'm just wondering if you could remind me whether or not everyone that was covered under that is now out of, out of the plan?
Yeah, we did that, I believe they're still in the plan. I think they, they're going to be there through the end of this year. This, this was due to the, the middle school consolid, not due to it, but the middle school consolidation, we, we offered a, 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 a plan so that encourage retirements, which, which we did get. And so I believe they're with us through the end of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a quick one for Ken. Ken, we also had to the early retirements when Pleasant Valley closed. Those, those teachers Those, those teachers are no longer.
That's right. Yeah, that, I believe that was, that was a two-year agreement that we made with those teachers and yeah, that we closed that in twenty seventeen. So yeah, they're, they're, they're out now.
And about how many teachers took the early retirement when the, when the middle schools were combined?
You're testing my memory a little. I, I think, I think it was somewhere in the, in the twenty range, maybe eighteen, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know exactly, I'm sorry.
Right, that's okay. Thank you.
There's no other questions. I'm going to move us on to Sam. Think you're still muted, guy. There you go.
Doyed, unmuting. So. Our new elementary schools are, we're working on punch lists over here. So the contractors are working on punch list items at those schools. There are still some items at some of the older schools that are still being moved over to classrooms, things like that. And we are waiting for the final okay on items that may either be purchased through the project. If there's money left in the project or we would bring some of those other items over from the older schools. So that, those things are still to come. Oh, our, our crew is now working on, we just started working on Mary Morrison School to get that prepared for. I see Boston Russell on here, the robotics guys are here. And they, they can't wait to get into Mary Morrison. So our crew is finally getting started over there to start working on. That building to get it ready for robotics to move into and for us to. Store the furnishings from that building in other areas that they're not going to be using. So that in the event that we needed the building again, we'd have that equipment and supplies and furniture within the building. And we, the last item that we're working on right now is the. We, we had a trailer for a school-based health center that was over at Mary Morrison previously. We moved it to Charles Barnum, but it was a little short of expectations. So we, we ordered a larger trailer so that they can conduct business appropriately in that trailer. That got delivered. We had it installed last week. Our, our guys are working on electrical and getting the fire alarm system all up to, updated in that now presently. Electricity and so on. And so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have that ready for ECAT to move into that building. Other than that, I think we're just doing our normal thing.
Yeah, like. Sam, thank you.
Few of the many things he does.
Yeah, thank you for your leadership around that. Liz.
Sam, I'm sorry, but you do food service, right?
Yes.
Okay, there's a rumor going around at the beach that the concession stand is going to open. On, like on a Friday night or a Saturday or something. And I keep telling people, no. That's not, I've not heard anything. So can you validate this for me, please?
I, I can look into it, but it, it's a rumor as far as I know.
Okay, good, because I was like, no, I haven't heard this. No, I would have heard this. And it's like. Yeah, they're going to open it up, like especially when school, like the month of September. You know, like just on Friday night, I think people really, really still want it open, like for ice cream and coffee and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, I, I'm a great believer that summer now is not over until Columbus Day. So I think I wore a summer jacket today. So I would be in favor of that because I'd be down there on Friday nights. And I'd probably see the chairman of the board there for a hot dog as well, but.
I'd be there for ice cream.
But I, I'll verify that for you.
Thank you very much.
If there's no other questions for Sam, and once again, Sam, we just, the board really appreciates your leadership specifically around the transportation. And the difficulty and I've heard from multiple sources how important was to have your. Have, have you be so involved with the STA and how comforting that was for the bus drivers and for the company and for the district? So thank you so much for your leadership and then also just trying to do all those things that you do. You must be exhausted. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you. We got, we have a lot of good people that we work with, so makes it easy.
Good, thank you. Our next part is our committee reports. And so policy, Lee.
We, we, we met in, I'm sorry, my cat is walking up and down. We met a little late because of the school opening up. We have two second readings that we will have under old business and we will meet again in early October.
Lee, thank you very much. Curriculum, Andrea.
We had a review of the middle school electives that were in place because of a concern that arose that there were. Courses that were being implemented, but we hadn't seen those at all. But Peter has given us, Mr. Bass has given us a really thorough explanation of them. And one of the, the, the concerns that my concern was allayed was that many of these new courses were really. Units of study that were already in place and they just were expanded into a. I'm losing my voice. A full elective. And everything else you've, you've heard. And, and the next meeting that Mr. Or Dr. Piatz and I have, I have planned. Is going to be looking at processes that are in place. We're just going to look at how things are happening in terms of. Curriculum writing and, and putting it in place. And also we wanted to, to look at the Latino black studies elective that the. Your state has mandated because it is in place, but as I understand it, it's in flux, whatever that means. So we wanted to just take a look at what's what. And that's that.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
Jay.
Yes, finance and facilities met on September seventh. Ken presented the budget timeline for all the activities at his office and the schools. Will be following to bring a budget to the superintendent and then ultimately to the board in, in February. Sam discussed details of HVAC upgrades at Charles Barnum. Which is now our oldest school at fifty-six years and also. Some upgrades at Fitch High School that he's planning. I'm working with some CIPs. He gave us an update on the new schools, including the, the feverish work they did just the weekend before it opened. To get the, before they opened. Susan announced. That at the last minute, we are going to be getting some Alliance District funding. I believe she did mention that too in, in her notes. Of two hundred thousand. And Clint Kennedy, our new director of IT is working on a plan for technology upgrades and software. He also gave us a, a report about other district technology needs. Including the sustainability of the one-to-one. Program, which obviously was very helpful in our district because we were able to pivot to. The remote and in hybrid learning by having that in place. But obviously those only last for so long. So he's looking into the sustainability of that. And then lastly, as we do at every meeting, we discussed. The situation with staffing and rooting for the buses and STA.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions for finance and facilities? Hearing none, I'm going to move on. The next one on our list is negotiations and at present, the negotiating team is working with the Gotten Teachers Association. And we're in the midst of that negotiation period. And at the end of our meeting, we will be voting on the good works. Of the contract of the custodians and the, and the secretarial. And so that will be at the end. So good work negotiation team. Rita, I'm going to have you go on.
To learn, yes. At the board meeting the other couple of weeks ago. Dr. Ryan Donlin, who's the Associate Executive Director, reported on their opening of their schools. They, they did mention more, you know, parents are driving their children to schools, so they're having localized traffic issues. Especially in New London at the multicultural magnet school. Learn is, he also reported about the new evaluations for teachers that are being rolled out with the state. And the new guidelines for educator evaluations. The twenty seventeen flexibilities for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two year school year, which I believe Learn will assist districts in. Learn also received a contract for the state of Connecticut for their tech schools to have training for. On effective instruction for English language learners. And. The, the executive order from the governor. Where all, we have to collect all vaccination cards and they are developing an app that they would share with districts. In order to process that and have that all in one place rather than having these cards and turning them back in. So that would be very good to check out. And I believe the other thing that I thought was very interesting. Was that. They're, they're going to be developing like a new design for Learn. They're going to have like they want a new logo. So they're asking input. They just feel that the open book with the birds flying is not appropriate anymore. And they're trying to do it so it's more regionally connected. I, I think the schools are, are doing great and things are moving forward with the addition. The second floor renovations to Ocean Avenue Learning Center for our students of special needs. So for the eighteen to twenty-one year olds. So that is being expanded. I think that's about it, but I, oh, I did hear and at, at our meeting that Grotten. Maybe asking for assistance from Learn with Power School. Is that true, Susan?
Yeah. Just right now, one of our staff members has taken another job. So in the interim, we are looking to our partners at Learn to help us fill the gap.
And I know that the, the woman who is there, she has reported on, she is so excited. She is such an expert.
Yes, she is.
Yeah, so I think that would be very beneficial.
I was really pleased that she was able to do this and Learn was able to put this together for us in the meantime.
And it's not just Grotten. I think it's a couple of other districts also, especially the smaller ones that don't have a staff. So Learn is, is really very valuable in our area.
They certainly are, you know, especially with professional learning for all of us.
Yes, thank you.
Town Council, RTM Board of Ed liaison.
I think that's me.
Is it not? Yes.
Okay, well, I think it was Phil and me and Kathy and that was it.
There's a lot of meetings that are on that first Wednesday of the month and maybe the liaison needs to kind of take a look at that. And I will approach the RTM and Town Council about that. The AGSA, GEA and Board of Ed liaison, we have not met yet. I think that that's due in October would be my guess.
I don't have the date in front of me, but I know that it's coming up. I'll find out.
Grotton Scholarship, Lee.
Grotton will, as I said last week, last time we, that they will not be meeting again. Probably until November, December or maybe January. So.
Thank you, Lee. Athletic fields.
Yes, athletic fields mess, met last Thursday. I believe it was the first time since April. And the major discussion that night was about. The possible configuration of fields at the former Claude Chester Elementary. They presented several proposals. It was interesting to note that they have not begun the process of pricing out. The overall fields. Plan because they, they, they don't know how Claude Chester will fit into it. So I had a, a discussion with Susan that I, I think we really need to look. At, you know, what we're going to do with our immediate needs at the high school and, and. Because it, it looks like this is going to be a, a multi-year process and, and we have needs we have identified for many years in the past. That's about all we got.
That's the field house, is that correct?
And the public restrooms.
I, I, I guess I meant those sort of as a package deal. I know they're not, but. And my understanding is that they've moved forward as a CIP. Is that correct?
I know that we had discussions with John Burt around CIPs and the need to look at that field house and those sites. They also, the town has SIR funds. You know, or American Rescue Plan Fund. So really looking at this in kind of partnership with them. And I think that they have a process. I need him to kind of clearly identify what that process is on, you know, taking in CIPs and requests. That could possibly be in alignment with their American Rescue Plan.
Ken.
Liz.
Is this Susan, what about the. The plan, is there a plan in place to replace the, the football field? I mean, I remember hearing about that a couple of months back, but I don't. Can you just refresh my memory, either you or Jay, about the using, get the football field upgraded as well as the track?
Jake, do you, do you know about what they're thinking, the field committee about the football field?
Well, again, I, I really don't know how much that the athletic director or the high school administration have weighed in on this. But they were considering at one point flipping the football field in a different direction. And. So I know they have a lot of, they have a lot of big plans, but I think we've been asking for about ten years to re-crown that field. So again.
We have.
I wouldn't put a lot of. Weight in, in anything being done quickly with this Fields Committee. Because of the, the fact that we're now in the second year and we don't even have it priced out. Unless something happens really, really fast. So. I think, you know, that's something we need to look at as well. Question also come about the, the lights at the middle school field. And where that's at, it seems as though the Town Council has consensus, but I don't think it's taken a vote to. Actually assign those funds and we want to make sure that that's done before the projects are closed out.
Thank you. State Council for Educational Opportunities for Military Children, Andrea.
Yeah, it was an active month for us. It was training on the. September fourteenth and it was really just reviewing exactly what the con, the military compact does. And just rules and regulations, but it was a really good refresher. And there's going to be a, an annual meeting that for the first time is going to be virtual. So we can, we can all attend that virtually and beyond November fourth. They're, they're still looking for families to make videos about how the compact has, has helped. And, but that's kind of in abeyance because of the, the conditions of, you know, the, the, the virus. So that, that's ongoing. It's, it's still in flux. But there, there are two things that were interesting to me. I thought were really pertinent to us. And one of, one of them is that they're, they're looking at ways that the, the compact could or, or where it does not. Involve National Guard. So that's still being looked at. But the big one is that there's this. It's an excerpt from Public Act twenty-one dash eighty-six regarding enrollment in a, of a military child in school. And this is what people in Washington think is going to work all across the country in all, all districts. So let's say that we're either a military family, well, it would have to be a military family. Coming into the area and they register their child in Grotten. But then they say, oh, I really like that house in product. So I think we'll buy the house in po, product, product. But this law says that we still have to honor the. But this law says that we still have to honor the registration in Groton, no cost to the fa- to the family. So they're relooking at that. I mean, do you have any idea how local governments or school boards work? It's just in the ether and that's that.
For us, that's something for us to kind of keep in in mind as, you know, if that is true.
It is.
Okay, all right, my goodness.
Good luck to you.
Thanks. Um, so I'm going to be moving us on to the, um, next part of our agenda, which is action items. And I'm just going to orient, um, us of to a several things, um, and then also ask for, um, a motion to move a couple of things in the agenda. But the first is, I just want us to pay attention to the action items and that there's going to be amendments because our last meeting, um, we stated that the sec- the first reading did not, um, did not move through and it actually did by votes. And so this is actually going to be the second meeting for our conduct. So I just wanted to, um, to have you guys, uh, to to know about that. Um, and then when we move on to, um, new business, I'm asking that number three, four and five, um, be our first, um, first three instead of our mid, because I know that we have many people here, um, who have come to speak to it and, um, just in deference of their time, um, to kind of move those, um, pieces up first instead of keeping them in the mid pack. Um, and that's the part that I need to actually have two-thirds, um, approval on. Um, once again, it's just moving, um, three agenda items first. Lee, I take it that you are approving of that. Um, are most people approving of that? Do I have anyone objecting to that?
Shouldn't we? It's it's just in form of a motion?
I I don't think we have to have a a motion, Dean.
To rearrange the agenda. Typically, we do, but.
Sure, so, okay, uh, that that'd be great.
I mean, I'm not a parliamentarian, but it can be done either way, but we've been caught sometimes.
You know what, Dean? I'd much rather be cautious than, sorry. So, um, I would like to entertain a motion that we move, uh, agenda items in the new business, three, four and five to the first place, one, two and three. Um, can I have a second? I've got Lee's hands.
Second.
Any dis- thank, thank you. I've got that second in from Lee. I did the first motion. Thank you, Rosemary. I appreciate that. Um, any discussion about this? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? This motion has carried. And Dean, thank you very much for keeping us honest. Um, the second, um, going back to the action items, um, which is the consent agenda. And so Dean, maybe you can walk me through this. So should I just break this down, folks, um, instead of doing two? I'm going to do, okay, so, um, the first is an amendment. Do I start off with an amendment or do I need to do for a motion?
Well, the first thing you'll need to do is you'll need to have a motion to approve the minutes followed by the proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you, Dean.
So 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 motion second, and then somebody will move that it be amended. That will be second if we vote on the amendment. Then we vote on the, on the, all the approval.
Okay, Dean, thank you. Walk me through this. Um, so I, um, I I would like to have, um, I'm going to do a motion to approve the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes. Can I have a second? I've got Liz. So I have a discussion?
No, I move that we amend the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one minutes, uh, as reflected in the, uh, uh, in in the agenda, specifically with respect to the, that the motion that we we've that we, the the motion to approve the first reading of policy P five-one-four-five-point-five-two, uh, was in fact approved.
All right, so now I-
And he said.
But do I, do I ask for a second on that?
Yeah, you need a second.
Have a second, Rita? Is there any discussion? What's going to, this was just something that occurred on the day after we realized that there was actually enough votes to pass the first reading to a second meeting. It's all that was.
And now we're voting on the amendment only?
So now we're going to vote on the amendment only for all those in favor of the amendment that's on the floor, which is to amend the ma- mi- meeting minutes to reflect the actual passing of the policy. Please say aye.
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 Pose? Abstain? That motion has carried.
I think I'm about to abstain because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, so we have one abstention. That's Rosemary. But the motion has passed. So are we done?
No, we're not done yet. Now what we have is the amended motion on the table. Now, there could be discussion on the amended motion.
Okay, so I'm 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 going to propose a motion for the, um, the amended motion that's on the table. Can I have a second, please?
Oh, we've already had, we already have a second.
Okay.
So what we have, what we've done is we've we've got the
So now we backtracked.
Motion to approve. That's been amended. So what we have on the table now is the amended motion to approve our minutes from August twenty-third.
What he said.
He said.
Can I have a second to that, please?
You don't need a second. Well, take it anyway.
All right.
Yeah.
Great. So now we just, now we just vote.
We could discuss or vote, yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the of the amended motion that's on the table, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? Motion?
Staying again.
Thank you, Rosemary, and one abstention from Rosemary. Um, the Board of Ed would also just like to say thank you to Chelsea Groton Foundation that made a hundred dollar donation on behalf of
Chaya.
Chaya Patel to Groton Middle, uh, Middle School to be used for student supplies. All right. Old business. Um, Liz, can you read the motion for old? Number one?
Number one, to approve policy P four-one-one-eight-point-two-four, conduct as a second reading.
Can I have a second to that, please? Lee? Any discussion? Susan, can you talk us through this?
Well, we did go back to the board. There was some language in there, um, and so we went back to the Policy Committee. And I think there were a few edits that we revised and made. There was a particular word, Andrea, do you remember your word that you weren't real keen on? So we we were able to tweak that to make it better, do you remember?
It was the word cherish.
Cherish.
That was Lee, not me.
Cherish is the word.
Yeah, not me. That was not me. That was Lee.
All right. And so we did revise that and, um, but everything else was, um, kind of status quo and quo in the first reading. And this particular policy, um, really is about the conduct related to staff. While the five thousand is related to, um, students and that word appeared in both of the, um, readings and was changed.
Dean?
Yeah, um, I'm going to, I'm probably going to abstain. I'll tell you why.
Don't you usually tell us why when it comes to that, when, when?
Well, all right. I mean, I could, I could tell you why I'm going to vote against it or I would vote for it. I mean, it's it's one of the three options. Uh, so these are always very well-intentioned. I I expect these will pass and I think we'll see how they play out. But I will, I will give you a heads up as to what my, what my concerns are. It's it's not always possible to nail down offenses you want to identify specifically. This happens all over the place. We want to encourage some conduct, discourage other conduct. And we 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 wrestle with defining terms. Um, so I don't fault people for, you know, for attempting and sometimes you can never really get to a a precise, uh, universally workable term. But the the question I had is, that the harass- the the term harassment is defined, but then when it comes time to investigate or to make a determination, harassment is defined by or seen through what lens? The person who says they've been harassed by the superintendent, by the investigator, what's the standard? That that's one of my concerns. Also, I'll be honest, a lot of things are brought up these days that are thrown into one big, one big salad bowl. And, uh, it's hard to tell sometimes how people arrive at the definition of something has offended me. Lots of things people find offensive that aren't truly offensive, but hey, that's just me. So is it going to be in the eye of the beholder? Is it going to be an objective standard, uh, et cetera? The other thing that I have to say is, again, I don't think this is intentional. But under the, uh, under both cases, I'll I'll shut up on the second one, so you know where I'm going with both of these. When it comes time for the, uh, for the procedure, for the R, it says if the offensive behavior is repeated following a request of the harasser, that it ceases. The employee shall or a student, uh, shall have the option of pursuing either an informal complaint procedure that designed to educate the harasser and to eliminate the problem. Otherwise, we go to a formal, a complaint. Maybe I'm being hyper-technical, but that to me presumes that in fact harassment's taken place to educate the harasser. So I'm not really happy with that terminology. I'm not, I'm completely in favor of two people hashing it out. Hey, you know, you said something and it bothers me. It's it offends me. Let me tell you why. But the language of educated to, you know, to ed- designed to educate the harasser says just presumes it's been, there's actually been harassment instead of somebody's idea that there's been harassment. The next paragraph talks about, you know, should the informal investigation, uh, fail? Uh, then we move to, uh, uh, then we move again to to a formal, again, presumes harassment. And then on the, on the last page, if the complainant is dissatisfied with the result of the investigation, if the complainant is, so it presumes that there's an investigation that said, you know what? Uh, something offensive might have happened. It doesn't rise to the level of harassment under this policy. So if the complainant is dissatisfied, there there's an appeal to the superintendent. But what if the investigation finds in fact that there has been harassment? And the person who was the alleged harasser says, no, wait a minute, I'm standing my ground. This is definitely not harassment. I'd like to appeal. That isn't addressed anywhere in here, so. Uh, but like I said, we'll see how this plays out. I'm talking about potentially hypotheticals that never come into being. So we'll see. I'd like to think that everybody involved in the district is reasonable and, you know, it's like, like, uh, Potter Stewart about pornography, you know, how do you define it? I'll know when I see it. So sorry to use that example, but it's from Supreme Court. Uh, so those those are my, that's why I'm I'm a little uncomfortable. They seem to be overbroad, uh, both of both of the policies, but you know, we shall see. So right now I'm abstaining. I will also say this on the student side, then I'll shut up. Uh, this publication and posting should inform students that unlawful harassment will not be tolerated in the district. I gave it to my daughter. This this is the 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 five thousand one. I gave it to my daughter.
So can we say to the four thousand, please, and then you can talk about it?
Oh, I'm 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 trying to do you all a favor so that I I won't talk about that one, but I'll save it for the five thousand if you like. So that's my bit.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but can I ask Dean if, uh, if the word alleged was in there behind, uh, harasser, would that satisfy your, your?
Well, uh, in what, in what location? I mean, I'm satisfied that the document refers to the harasser. It's the alleged harasser. All all I'm saying is the way that it's, you you're talking about where I, where I said it's, uh, it seems like it's presumed.
Yes, so if you, if the word, uh, alleged were in there, would that satisfy your, your?
Yeah, no, it doesn't. Designed to educate the alleged harasser, in other words.
Oh, it doesn't say alleged?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't say that now. It's designed to educate the harasser. If you put the alleged in there, there's still a presumption in that entire phrase that harassment actually happened. You know, but again, the I I I think it could be rephrased. I don't have ready language. It could be rephrased to to encourage that the two parties actually, uh, try to work it out themselves. But when you say designed to educate the harasser, it basically presumes that there has been harassment and the harasser needs to be educated as to what they did wrong. But in fact, it might be the other way around. Might maybe nothing went wrong and the person misunderstood. So can, you know, conversation, yes. Uh, educating the harasser, even educating the hardly alleged harasser, still has sort of a one-way thing going for it.
Thank you, Dean.
Sure.
Lee? And then Rita.
I just would, I just would like to say that not only does much of this come from CAE, which has a lot of really good people who are lawyers and this is what they deal with. In addition, if necessary, we too have a couple of very good lawyers. And they've seen this, CAE came up with most of it. So if they think it's okay, maybe it's okay. That's all.
Thank you, Lee. Rita?
Um, my question is that oftentimes, um, when, if the person is just satisfied with whatever the superintendent has decided, it then comes up to the Board of Education. And I don't see that in this policy at all. Is this something different?
The person can sue. That's what the parent or the kid or whatever can always sue.
No.
This is all before.
I'm, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, there have been times when for disciplinary reasons or whatever, the superintendent, you know, it comes, they wanted to come in front of the board and then the board has heard the case and then they decide that's why the board can never get involved in in disciplinary cases, um, and hear anything about it until, you know, it's presented in front of them. So I I was just curious, th- this is all about the superintendent deciding, but nothing about going beyond that. I I was just curious. Why CAE left out the board? And can they appeal? Can can this harasser, whoever this per alleged harasser, can they appeal to the Board of Education?
Not really.
I I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Maybe that's a question for Floyd.
It could be. That's why we have a lawyer.
Yeah.
If, is this a question that we need to have, I mean, answered so that we should table this one and the second one? For next one and see if we can get information. I know, Lee, you can shake your head, but I might.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Well, you know, though, there have been many times where the board over the years has sat and people, they, you know, both parties have come and and we've had to make a decision. And in this case, we're not involved in it in this at all. And I was just curious, why not? I mean, it it's fine, but I I just don't want them to leave anything out that if a person is accused of something and if it's all put on the superintendent to make this decision. And if they're not happy with the investigation, that's when it often used to come to the board.
That's actually when it comes to their own lawyer.
Well, they have lawyers at the board. They they have their lawyers come.
Though I I am going to, um, address sort of what Beth has said. I wonder if there's a difference between harassment and grievance um, and whether harassment stays with, um, the superintendent and the grievance kind of goes up through the board. That kind of makes sense to me.
That's a good question.
That makes sense to me too, but.
Andrea?
I asked that very question at at one of the board or what the policy meetings. And, uh, Lord, when I asked it, Lori Lapine said, then it goes to the board. So I I agree with Rita that perhaps that should be in here. It's it's, yeah. Cam, why don't I write a recommendation or that we table these two?
I second that.
Sure you do.
Do we have a dis- um, is there any need for discussion on that for just tabling it until we get to, um, till we get those questions answered?
We actually see Floyd this week.
Yes, we do. So, um, so all those in favor. Um, tabling, uh, agenda item one and two, which is the second meeting for policy of the harassment, we might as well get it right, guys. Um, all those in favor, please say, uh, aye. Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Right, thank you, guys. I'd much rather have us get it right. Um, and so the first, um, the new first agenda item, um, is the motion number three. And Rita, I'm wondering if you would be willing to read the motion for me?
Yes, this is, well, this is my favorite part of the meeting, just to read this. To approve the after-school hiking programs field trip request to the White Mountains, New Hampshire, scheduled for May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two through May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
Can I, can I please have a second? I I see Lee. And then can we have a? And then can we have a discussion? And Susan, I did see that Seth was there.
Beth was here. He's been here, I think, the whole meeting.
I know, cuz he just.
And this is really a wonderful program, as you know. That he, he works with kids every week after school. To do mini hikes and team building and this is kind of the culmination trip. Seth, did you want to say something?
Uh, I can, if you'd like. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I'm not really changing a whole lot for this year. Other than I just have to wait out and see how COVID plays, but I wanted to get it um approved to start. Um, and then modify as needed from there. So we did a little bit last year at the very end of the year. We did a couple of local things. Um, in the late spring and we canceled everything the year before. So it's been a while since we've done something.
Seth, what age group?
This is fourth and fifth grade. So eight to, eight to ten or about that range. I haven't started yet this year cuz I was waiting to go through this process first. Usually I start. Um, earlier and then wait for this approval, but I was just waiting this year.
He brings additional teachers on to do the hike and also some of his past hikers. Who are high school seniors now.
We actually haven't done that in a while.
Oh, you haven't.
No, no, those, those, those kids are all in college, so.
Never mind.
Maybe some middle school.
Right, yes, there's probably some there and there's some at the high school as well.
Yeah. It's a wonderful program and I hope it goes through this year.
So what, what are prep height look, looks, look like? Wow, it's easy for me to say, not really. And then I also want to recognize Dean as well.
So um, I, I haven't changed too many things. We'll do a couple of things to start. I've got um bluff point on the schedule in late October. Um, that's on a half day and we finish just before it gets dark. Uh, I usually check something in, on one of the Blue Blaze Trails in December when it's either got pretty cold or pretty snowy. And then we don't do anything again until um. Until um, the, the later in the spring when the snow clears. I do typically camp in November, but I was meeting with Susan about that. Um, I just want to make sure that even though it's cold, we're outside and it's spending the night and I want to make sure we do that appropriately this year. We do it appropriately every year anyway, but this year with COVID is just a different situation. So I want to make sure that. Um, we follow all the rules and everything that we're supposed to do. Of course, anybody that's going on this field trip, it's extra above and beyond the school day. So parents would know what they're, what they're sending their children to anyway. Um, and that's where we go. And then we do a bunch of team building cuz I don't like to take kids away. Until they're pretty familiar with how we operate and how um, how I operate. And what Susan said, I have a kindergarten teacher um that is going with us this year. And I have a paraprofessional that's going as well.
Dean?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment along with Rita. I, I believe this is a wonderful opportunity, especially for people who may not have uh, otherwise been able to. Kids not, not have been able to go up there on their own. Uh, it's been some years since I've been up there. My brother goes far more often now. I'm the one that gave him the bug. Uh, about going to the White Mountains um. Uh, and hopefully some of the kids will see it as well. There's really no, no substitute for going up there and hiking. Uh. Where, do you have any plans specifically where you want to go?
So we picked Lonesome Lake. Um, it's, um, it's probably one of the closer trips that we've taken before. It's about a two-mile walk up to the cabin. Um, and then we have multiple options from there to either summit a couple of different mountains, hike down to a waterfall. Um, walk along a stream. We've got plenty of things that we can do. So there's multiple options. And um, to plant the bug in people's eye, I typically get pictures of kids that are well beyond the program that I'll get either a text or an email. With pictures of them somewhere on some mountain, just sending the picture saying, oh, look, we, we look where we've been. So it carries on after a while.
Maybe they'll learn some French. A lot of people from Quebec there.
There are.
Mostly.
Any other discussion?
No, I just wanted to say when Seth started this at Fitch Middle School, when you were a math teacher. Many years ago, um.
Not that many.
Yeah, I believe your father and your sister were the first people that went with you.
Uh, we had a, we had staff members that went as well. I've had everything from AIDS. I've had both of my sisters have attended. My father did go at one point. Um, but he got old and decided that children weren't his thing anymore, so. That moved on. I've had, I can't tell you how many people um have helped out. Many at the middle school. Um, and then, yeah, Mark Russell, there you go. He's gone before. I see his, his note there. So it, it's rotated through a lot of different people.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you so much for doing it year after year.
I, I'm, I'm assuming that if we gave you the approval and we figured out that COVID is not. Doing what it needs to do, which is to back down, that you would come back to the board to talk about that?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll be in touch with Susan, so she knows what we're doing all along the way. So if we need to revisit, we would.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? For those who are listening, it sounds like we're going by this really quickly. Seth has, um, this is something that, I mean, I think we were sad because we haven't had it. Um, the past year, but that um, I'm just gonna. Echo sort of what Rita and Dean has said, that this is something that is just so exciting that we offer our, our students um for our life. With the potential of a life, um lifelong passion um for hiking. So Seth, thank you very much for your journey on that.
Thank you.
If there is no um other discussion, I would like the um to approve. Um, the motion is to approve the after-school hiking program field trip request to the White Mountains um, New Hampshire. Scheduled for May twenty fifth, twenty twenty two through May twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Can I have a second? Um, all those in favor?
That's better. Oh, I.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion has carried. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Jay, can I have you read um number four motion, please?
Certainly. I move to approve the robotics team's field trip request. To Bellarmine College Preparatory in San Jose, California. Scheduled from October twenty ninth, twenty twenty one to November first, twenty twenty one.
Can I have a second? Thank you, Rosemary. And can we have a discussion? Susan, I don't know if you want to start this off?
Well, um, it came to my attention just recently, so I know it's, we usually try to prepare the board and give them a little more time. And I think the robotics um coordinators are here. I had asked Ted and he said that they would be able to share. And give us more information. So I'm just looking to see.
Yeah, and, and I, I certainly will, will let uh the robotics team uh coordinators. Uh, speak to this. Uh, I think Austin and Robert, and I think I see Martin is here as well. Um, but uh, I think that uh, first off. Um, when COVID kind of started, one of the first things that was actually canceled at, at Fitch High School was a robotic strip and. And uh, you know, the, the uh, the option for these students, I mean, I, I know everybody knows what a great program this is and. And how hard these kids work. Um, you know, the uh, the students really live for these competitions and, and I think that. Um, this was a kind of short notice because the robotics team had short notice. So I want to make sure they, that everybody understands they. They do understand that this is kind of uh, short notice for the board. Um, and that, that we're looking at a, a, you know, a flight and so on and so forth. So, you know, the board has to decide if that's, that's gonna be. Uh, reasonable to them. Uh, I looked over the COVID restrictions or COVID mitigation strategies for the. Um, uh, for this competition, they're more stringent than our school uh, uh. Uh, needs. Uh, they have vaccination requirements and so on. Um, and uh, this will give the opportunity for our students to compete uh again. Um, and, and give the students the opportunity. I think that the team has paid the registration fee with the understanding that they can lose it. And they, they understand that that can happen uh, if the board is not in favor of this, but. Um, I think that again, looking over all the information that they've given, uh, which I think we shared with the board. Uh, in regard to the mitigation strategies, the requirements that everyone needs to follow for this particular, uh, and the fact that it is a smaller trip. Um, would give our students the opportunity to, to compete again. Uh, and, and display what is ab- absolutely an awesome machine that these, these uh, students and their, and their coordinators have put together. Um, and an awesome program that they, they have. Uh, so uh, I, I certainly will allow the board to ask questions. I am not going to answer them because I, I want the robotics team to be able to answer them. Um, but uh, they can give you kind of an idea of uh, what's involved as well, so.
Could we hear from the coaches, please?
Sure, yeah. Uh, so like Ted said, this, we know it's, it's very short notice. Um. Unfortunately, the event was announced not that long ago. Due to COVID, they weren't sure if they were gonna be able to hold it, so they announced it a little bit last minute. Um, and then we wanted to check with the parents of the students who would potentially be going first, make sure that they would be comfortable with their students attending, so. We were just able to get all that done and those parents are on board. Are happy with their COVID precautions being taken by our team and the event that we're attending. We'd be looking to take a pretty small crew of students out there. You know, keep things easy to manage and all that. Be looking at five to seven students. Uh, five is really the bare minimum that we can compete with, so we'd be taking definitely five, possibly one or two more. Um, to support. We'd be traveling with. Let me double check here, around six parents and mentors. Um, so we'd have plenty of, plenty of eyes on the kids while we're out there. Um, it's a very prestigious event. It's the, probably the most competitive event uh within our program. It is the best of the best. You have to be invited to attend. They had around a hundred and fifteen teams apply. Um, and we were one of the forty or so that were invited to attend. Uh, so a pretty big deal for us to have been invited out there. I think the kids have built a, a very, very impressive robot this year. Um, and are very excited to. Hopefully be able to compete with it at some point in the future here. There are not a lot of other competitions around. Um. There was one over the summer in Massachusetts that we attended. It was a one-day event. Um, and much, much smaller than a typical event is. Um, and there is one event. Scheduled in Old Lime later this year. And those are the only other events that we have on the radar right now. Uh, so attending this event is really one of the last chances that uh, some of our kids might have, not knowing what. COVID's gonna be like and come the spring when our normal competition season is, this may be the last chance for our seniors to. To compete. We would be taking the five students that we have spoken to already about it are all seniors. Um, have all been on the team for three or four years. Are quite frankly, very, very deserving of the opportunity to go out there. They really are a bunch of great kids, so.
I, I went on the website for the school and I've been looking in it. You know, I, I can't find that on their schedule. This competition, you know, they have for October. Um, but I was reading about their team. They, they sound like they're world renowned.
They have, uh, this, the, the team that's hosting it has won multiple world championships. Competing with them along with a few others from that area.
Right, and they're going, I mean, they've been to China. I mean. It, it's um, so I, I mean, i- it's against our board policy, so. I think it's like our policy says something about we have to know six months in advance or something like that. I don't know. So we'd have to amend that to approve, to approve this event. But um, I, I totally understand and, and I'm sure it'd be a wonderful event and wonderful experience for the seniors.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So um. Can, can you once again tell me why this is such a last minute? Um, cuz it just, it.
The event was announced the, at the end of August.
It's announced at the end of August?
So we, we spent the last couple of weeks sitting down with the parents to see if they would be comfortable. With their students going, like I said, and then trying to figure out what the logistics would look like for us. And then I think it was a week or so ago that we were able to submit the paperwork to, to Ted. Uh, yeah.
No, you're fine, Martin. I, I can hear you.
Yeah, uh, definitely, we, the, we found out the event was being scheduled end of August, like, like uh, Robert said. Um, our, our main goal was to make sure that before we addressed it. Um, to the, to the BOE and to, to Ted is that uh, we weren't going to be asking for something that. We didn't have permission from the parents uh first to do. Um, and. We broke it down into, you know, what are the essence, what are the essentials we need? And we spoke to the parents in two different sessions, so that kind of, kind of ate up some of our time. I guess in hindsight, we, we could say that we, we probably should have submitted it right off the get-go. But we didn't know what we're going to have, if we were gonna even be able to field a team or anything like that. Um, so uh, I, I do recall, I think, I think the, the field crest. Field trip request says two months, so we're coming in at, at a month out from the event. Uh, and as, as Robert said, they, they didn't announce it. Uh, California was still trying to figure out what they were gonna be able to do um, with their policies out there, so. That's kind of the urgency that we got from it. Um, as Robert and Austin pointed out, this is probably, well, this is first of all, the most prestigious event that, that exists. Um, to be selected, to be able to, to attend is, is, is quite an honor to begin with. And had we known sooner, we, we probably would have, we would have submitted sooner. Uh, this is typically a summer event. Uh, so it happens in the off-season.
Um, I have one more question.
Question?
Yeah, Rita, can I go to Liz um for, first, thank you.
Uh, um. Kim, you know, Rita pointed out that we're supposed to have a certain um time according to our policy. What do we have to do in order to? You know, to um, adjust that in this, like, for this type of case? What do we, what, what's the process?
So I, I'm gonna ask my, though he doesn't think he's a politarian, but he really is my politarian, Dean and Antipas, but. I think what I would, I would think is that by us putting it to motion, we are. We are stating the fact that we are, that we have um moved, that we've moved the requirements. Um, given the, the time, the timeframe. Um. So I mean, like, I, that's, that's my assumption is that, that's what we would do, is that if we, we move forward on this motion, which was to approve the trip. By essence, we are, we are implying that we are um negating the policy of the, of the one month.
So should we put in the, if we make that motion?
Hear you. Um, Liz is, Liz is speaking, but Dean, you're muted. Liz, continue.
I'm sorry, I just lost it. Sorry. Senior moment. Never mind.
Dean?
My first question is where, where is the policy? So I can look at it. The second question is. I have no experience on the board with attempting to suspend policy. Is there a policy with respect to suspending policy? You know, so if we vote to suspend policy or to alter policy, uh, are we committing an illegal or avoidable act? Um, but first I'd like to find out what the policy is before I, I wind myself around that.
Okay, I, I'm actually don't know if, if it's a policy. I think it has to go to the superintendent first and. And Susan, when did it go to you?
Um, I would say this past week. Because we just added it to the agenda. I know that Joyce reached out to you.
Yep.
I remember, Kim.
Liz.
I remember. Could we then make a, have the motion say that for, like, just say as, in just this instance, like. That we could adjust policy instead of, you know, adjusting the policy overall, but saying, you know. Due to the circumstances, we want to adapt or change the policy. So that we're not having to go and rewrite our policy. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I don't even know what the policy is, to be quite honest. I don't.
And I don't even know if it was policy or in the regulations that we specified all that detail with, you know, out of country.
It is in a policy. There is a policy.
Yes. Okay, thanks, Lee.
Where?
Um, I couldn't, I, I was looking before I couldn't find it. But I remember when it was put in place and it actually had to do with the business department at, at Fitch coming to us the last minute and wanting to go to a competition. And that's when we decided we needed a policy. So. Yeah, but I, there's always an exception to every rule.
Dean?
If, if there's no board adopted policy, if this is something we're calling a policy, but it's not actually in our policy, this is just something that we, you know, we preferred happen in the future, but we never formally adopted as a policy and it's not in the law otherwise.
We do have a policy and a regulation that specifies coming to the board.
I'm looking for it.
For field trips. And it has parameters around it. You know, when it has to come, a lot of, a lot of the field trips, if they're local, they just come to the principal and then the superintendent. But the ones that are out of state, out of country have time parameters around.
Kim, I just saw a, a note in, in the chat that it's policy six, one, five, three.
Field trip regulation six, one, five, three.
Thank you, Andrea.
Field trips approval process.
I, I, I'm going to weigh in, um, just for, I, I'm really struggling with the optics. Given the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic. Um, and, um, are we setting, I mean, we just approved a, a field trip with the, with the knowledge, knowing that in May, if, if the COVID procedures or the COVID continues to sort of be, to, to be up, like, it's going to be suspended. And I understand that this is not in your control. And I'm really having a hard time with, I, I get it for our seniors who have worked so hard not to have these competitions and to be invited to this is amazing. For me, I struggle with the optics about what that looks like.
I'm saying do it. I mean, there are regulations. Sounds reckless, I know. Are we really going to say no because of this? When we're the robotics school?
I, I, so Dean, I'm not at all stating.
No, 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 I know you're not. I'm just saying.
Right.
That, that's where I'm, I'm, I'm headed.
Okay. Andrea?
In terms of optics, it seems to me that this is really in the, the area of parental, parental permission. You know, if, if parents don't want their children to go, then they just say no. But if this is something that they're really encouraging their, their children to do, I think we ought to move in that direction.
Where are the funds for the trip coming from? The problem is, is that we haven't even seen it, like any of that, like, um, stuff.
That will come out of our operating, but we are an established five one C three nonprofit. We run mostly off of donations from corporations and local businesses. There'll be some out of cost, uh, out of pocket costs for each student who attends. But most of the, all of the costs to get our robot out there and back and all of that will be covered and the registration fee are covered by our operating budget.
And you strict science with masks and all that stuff.
Rosemary, I think half of what you said came through. Can you repeat yourself, please?
And you guys will follow strict science in regards to masks and vaccinations and things like that. Can we hold you to that?
Of course. They are required not only by us in a team policy that we have, but also by, you know, the state of California and required by the event that we're going to.
Yeah, everybody there will be vaccinated. To, to get in the doors, you have to be vaccinated.
And mask required at all times.
All the students and mentors we're taking will be vaccinated, yes. Masks at all times. There's no food or drink indoors at the event and even water. Can't drink water if you're inside, you have to go outside.
Okay.
All of that.
And I just read from the policy. It does state that all proposed trips that involve travel outside the state or include an overnight stay require the approval of the superintendent. But then in parentheses, it says two months advanced notice, but it doesn't seem like we were provided two months notice from the competition. So it did go through that process except for the timeframe.
Jay?
So I'll defer to Dean on the legality of this, but it seems as though the deadline is, follows on the, the reasoning in the previous paragraph that requests should be submitted early enough before the planned trip to allow for a thorough review of the itinerary and supporting accommodations. So that's sort of the legislated history of, of setting that deadline. So if the superintendent can do her due diligence in less time, I wonder if that two months is just more of a suggestion for the administrative burden.
Well, and I think it goes back to Rita's initial thought was that in the past, we were brought these things without enough time. So especially to the board in relation to out of country trips.
And, and this trip did not even exist two months ago. So it was impossible to have met that deadline.
Right.
There's an even stiffer under D, all proposed trips are resulting students missing two or more days of school. Is, if that's going to be the case, then we need eight months of notice. The board does.
Right. Yeah.
There's no way of twisting that one.
Right, but that's not, they're, they're leaving on the October twenty ninth. And that's, that's a weekend, that's Friday. So they're, they're not going to miss two days.
Yeah, what does the calendar look like?
They, they will list that they'll miss Friday and then the Monday they'll be back in school on Tuesday.
Okay, so you don't need our approval. You just need the super's approval. Two months, maybe we can, you know.
Yeah, again, I, I, I do want to also reiterate two things. I mean, number one, obviously, we, we say that the, the trip simply we did not have the, the information about the trip. And I've been meeting regularly with the robotics team and they are keeping me up to date. And as soon as they gave this to us, we got to the superintendent. But we all understood the fact that it was a quick turnaround and, and we knew that would be part of the discussion. We get that. The other piece is, is that we've have reviewed the COVID protocols for the robotics team. They've reviewed those with me regularly. They've gone through and made sure they've asked questions about what's going on in the schools. And in regard to this trip, they, I, I hope that you have the supporting documentation where they talk about the COVID protocols. Kim, where you're talking about the optics, I completely get it. I think that, uh, you know, again, we want to make sure that we are keeping our students as safe as possible. When I looked at the COVID protocols, they are well above and beyond anything that we have in our schools. And in regard to masking, in regard to the people that are actually allowed in the vent, in regard to the, the actual itinerary, the, the kids are going to be going from where their hotel is to this event, essentially in a bubble the entire time that they are there, uh, is the way it was described to me. I think that the event and the actual competitive spaces is like a mile or so from each other or something like that, if I remember correctly. So it's, you know, they, they are being very, very careful with everything they said in terms of what the, 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 the competitors are allowed to do and who they're allowed to be interacting with. Obviously, we know that, 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 you know, anything could happen when, when students are, you know, either here or there. But I think that the proper safety precautions were involved. I wouldn't even have brought to the board if I didn't have confidence in that. In addition, I, I do want to say that I have the utmost confidence in the robotics team and the mitigation strategies that they've done in their, uh, in their own work. So they, they have done check-ins, check-outs. You know, they have, they know exactly who's in the building at all times for any kind of contact tracing. They've been super careful with their masks. Susan and I were able to visit them, uh, last year. We were very impressed with the work that they were doing with regard to that and hand washing and, and use of equipment and things of that nature. So I have utmost confidence in that. I know that the discussion of the board, you know, is, I, I understand the policy completely and, and, uh, and I, I completely get that piece of it. But, uh, you know, I think it was just important to bring this forward because it was an opportunity for the kids. And, um, you know, it's something that they really have lost out on. This was an opportunity for, for them to get a little of that back. So that's, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Andrea?
Kim, you know what a beast I am about setting precedent. And I don't want it to look like I only want, I'm only worried about that when it's something that I don't like. But I, I, I don't want that to happen here. So my question is, can we, I don't know, maybe this is for Dean. Can we make a motion or can we move that, um, that this, this field trip can take place under the provision that we reexamine policy?
I don't think so. I was trying to see what, what our power is to make and unmake policy once we've made policy. So as you were, as you were speaking, I was just reading it to see. So from adoption of prime operation through schools. Policies adopted, amended, revised only after reading consideration. Now we're fewer than two meetings of the Board of Education. So we can't, we can't change policy on a whim. I see what you're saying.
I, I'm saying that just under the provision that we examine it, not that we do it. And I know we, we've adjusted policy.
Yeah, no, I don't, I think, I think that's being, in, in terms of the policy, formal procedure, I think that's being cute. I like Jay's interpretation. Yeah, I like, I like Jane, Jay's interpretation better. He's following the spirit of the, uh, of the regulation, the spirit of the, uh, the policy. Which is, you know, why do we have the vetting period? We have the vetting period to vet. If we're satisfied, I, I would argue with him, if we're satisfied that we've vetted this and we're comfortable with it, and ultimately, yeah, the parents are the ones who say yay or nay with respect to their kid going to California.
So, so the question is, Susan, has this been vetted enough for you?
Yes. I, I feel pretty confident the fact that they're all, they're mostly seniors. There's five, the parents and the robotics, you know, team mentors are going. And it really is just the two days out of state and that they're going to be really diligent about the masking and making sure kids are safe. Even the age of the kids could determine that, you know, many of these folks are already fully vaccinated. So.
We're going to recognize Jay and then Rita.
So along the lines of vetting, uh, part of our policy also is insurance. And that's to make sure that the proper trip insurance is in place and liability. And I don't want to put Ken on the spot, but you know, uh, do we have the proper insurance in place? Or, or do they need to pick up some additional trip insurance?
You're going to need to unmute, Ken.
Yep, sorry. Yeah, we'd have to look into that. I, I don't know the answer. Sorry, Jay.
No, I know I was putting you on the spot, but it, it, part of the, um, part of the policy is parents are responsible for trip cancellation, but school sponsored trips may involve significant risk. And the district may require purchase of additional insurance.
I, I can, I can look into that.
Do you have anything follow up on that, Jay?
No, I'm just trying to think. I mean, I guess we could make it subject to.
Rita?
Is this the robot that was built last January? That, you know, you get the kits in the winter. So was this the robot that was built previously? Correct?
Yeah.
Well, sort of, sort of correct. It was built over this following year. It was not Yeah, was it, was it twenty twenty robot? We built the robot specifically this year for the virtual competitions that were, were happening. Uh, we came a whole new game design or a robot design. And, uh, yes, new robot to this, to the twenty twenty twenty, twenty-one season.
Yes, January twenty twenty-one.
And the other thing is when, when we've had requests like this before, they usually will give the breakdown, the hotel where the, the children are staying, the flights, you know, like a little bit of information. And also the funding, where it's coming from. We use, there's a form that needs to be filled out by the robotics team that shows all that. And then it's also submitted to the superintendent, to the board.
We, we filled out the field trip form and submitted that.
Yeah, we just, we just.
Gotcha. We also did include an additional document that goes very in depth into.
Yeah. I guess that would have been helpful for us to have had.
Then we wouldn't have had so many questions. That's usually is the protocol, is that we receive that document. It's in our packet and it's reviewed ahead of time. But, um, I'm willing to make an exception and approve this. So I'd like to move on and take a vote.
So we have, uh, we, we have, um, direction.
Andrea has a question. I mean, if there are no further questions.
Oh, I thought I was seconding.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's already on the table, though.
Yeah, it's already on the table. And I'm hearing the, the, of the, the potential of an amendment in terms of subject to making sure that the correct trip insurance has been activated. Jay, am I hearing you correctly?
Uh, yes. Maybe we could say to amend the motion to satisfy the insurance requirements of our policy.
Or can I just add something? Cause Peter had written a comment, cause he's done the international field trips in the past. And he's thinking that speaking to parents who are purchasing additional insurance in case, for instance, COVID hits and you can't travel internationally or, you know, to other states. So, um, I just wanted to put that on the table. That is this advising that, or that we have additional insurance just in case the trip doesn't go forward.
I'm going to recognize Dean and then, I am sorry, I don't know if it's Martin, who is your last name or Martin is your first name? So I apologize. I'm sorry, what?
My first.
Okay. I just didn't know if your full name is Martin Robotics Coach. So I just was trying to get that all set. Dean?
Yeah, the insurance that's required, I'm trying to find, I, I saw it here in the, uh, you know, in the, in the procedure part of it. The insurance that our policy requires is not related to the trip. It's required to cover exposure, uh, potential exposure of the adults that are going along, teachers and other staff that may be going along. So if something happens and there's a suit that the district has covered, our employees are, are covered. That's the insurance that we, we require uh, under the policy. I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of where, where it was. It, it's mentioned in the policy itself. And it says, uh, since school sponsored trips may involve significant risk of financial loss of the district and students, district may require purchase of additional insurance. But the, the type of insurance is specified. Saw it here. Uh, it's specified in the, uh, in the procedure. In the R sixty-one fifty-three. Where the heck is it?
If that's the case, I will say that uh, our employees will be covered under our general liability, even on a trip as well as under workers comp. So I, I think we're covered for our employees. And then the students would be covered under our student accident, um, policy. So if.
We, we, yeah, we may have it in place already.
And I would just wonder about, um, the, you know, mentors.
Oh, non-employees. Oh, non-employees.
Martin, I'm gonna invite you to the process.
Okay, yeah, that was my quick question is on the, on the insurances. With the travel, that's typically what, what we get. So we're covering our travel expenses with our insurance when we buy that. Tickets and whatnot. As for. Town employees or school employees, I, I would be the only, on the, as, as the, the coach, I'd be the only school employee, I guess, going. And I don't know if it makes a difference, but I don't really interact with any students other than at the robotic shop. So it's not like a teacher, but I, I still understand that, that aspect of it. And thirdly, as, as it covers the, the mentors. This would not be, I don't see how this would be any different than any other event in respects to the mentors. Mentors volunteer their time and they are typically assuming all their own risks and their own insurance. I don't know for a fact whether or not the, the school covers the mentors when they're volunteering at any event. Or even in the shop, for that matter. But from the, from the insurance perspective, those are the three things that I was hearing. Trip insurance, which we typically would get that. And I'm sure we can provide that proof if need be. For staff members, only one BOE staff member would be attending. That would be myself. And mentors are, as I said, usually assuming the risks on their own. The only other person, I, I should say, we have two parents looking to go. To support chaperoning. One being a, a female, so that we always have a, a female adult there whenever we have a female student. And our anticipation is to have a female student. And the other one is, is a parent of, of one of the students attending.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I did find it finally. It, it is in our, in the R sixty one fifty three. It only seems to appear under international trip. It says the board, this is number twelve. The Board of Education shall secure liability insurance pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section. Ten two thirty six for the protection of teachers and other employees who act as chaperones on Board of Education approved field trips. We have it in as a requirement for international trips.
That's what Peter was referring to.
Yeah, the statute, it seems weird that we would not have those requirements for, say, a trip across the country, you know. Ten thirty, ten two thirty six says, the Board of Education. May ensure against the liability imposed upon it by sections ten to twenty and ten to big five. And any insurance company organized in the state, blah, blah, blah. Now, I, now I gotta look, go look up two twenty, two thirty five. But, you know, it may be that we already have this insurance in place. You know, it's just sort of there.
According to, according to can we do?
Okay. I mean, I, I imagine it's the kind of insurance that we have in place when we go, go down to New York City, take the kids to Lincoln Center or something like that.
So I, I, I want to be careful that we're not getting into the weeds. I mean, this is, I, I think in future, I think it's gonna be helpful that the board needs to be seeing this. That we is, we have as much as the documents as possible so that some of these questions could have been answered. So. But I, I feel like we've had some, we have had most of the questions answered. What we have is, is that this is moved ahead, ahead of what our policy is. But the superintendent has sort of, in a sense, given her blessing for this trip. And so that is part of the, part of the document. So I don't know. Dean, what I'm hearing you saying is that because there's a policy and there's a certain timeframe that we're not in. Do we need to acknowledge the fact that we're moving against that policy? Or, or can we just go for the motion on, on board, which is to approve the trip?
I think we, I think we, I think, I'm saying we, we should have, I'm in favor of approving the trip. Not withstanding the, you know, the, the timeframe for vetting that we have on the policy. That's, I think, ultimately in, in line with the spirit of the, of the regulation. The policy that we have. That said, if it does require something, if we do have a concrete insurance requirement. We would, we, we would not dispose of that. We should be, we should have that insurance in place. And I'm thinking we probably already do. Again, Ken, what happens when it, when it, we have a field trip to Boston or wherever? Down the road, you know?
We have that, and we have that.
Yeah. So I guess just make sure that that kind of a policy actually would cover a trip to California, for example.
Okay.
It doesn't have an exclusion. Other than that, I'm okay. So I guess, I guess, yeah, I, I would move that we. That we amend the motion to condition the approval, making sure we have whatever insurance is adequate for the trip. That way our tails are covered.
I just have a quick question. I'm on like the webpage for their, for their team at the, at Ballmer Prepatory School. And, and it, because keep saying due to COVID nineteen for the foreseeable future. Team two fifty four will not be hosting any outreach events. So where, where, what website could you direct me to that talks about this competition in particular? One of the coaches, maybe you could tell me where to go because I'm on their site and I can't find it. So I was just curious. So I could read about it.
Yeah, we're trying to get the exact link here. Yes, I, it is cheseychamps.com.
That's, yeah, that's, I know, Chesa Champs. And it moved from another school to theirs and it was sponsored by NASA. I mean, it's a wonderful, it's, I just hope bringing five students when they have like this team of a hundred people. I mean, it might be overwhelming. So it's called Chesa Champs?
Yeah, they, they put it, it was put in the chat as well.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll try to find it.
And I.
It's in, in the CAD? Jesse CAD, is that it? No.
In the chat, in the, in the Zoom, someone put.
Chat Zoom, Rita, you can get the website.
Yeah, I'm on the website.
No, it's in the chat.
The website.
I'm reading it. It's just not open to the public.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Forty teams have been invited, but it will not be open to the public.
I see. That's why it's not in here.
Oh, correct, correct. And, and in regards to, to outreach and, and those things are different, usually. Outreach event is something that is dealing directly with the public or with, with a larger group. But it's not part of necessarily a school or. For example, we do outreaches where, where we go to the Grotten Senior Center and help out with stuff there. We go to the public library. Those are things where the general public's open. And that's why they're saying. We're not really doing a lot of things like that ourselves. And they're just not hosting them. And that's what their site's saying is that they're not hosting any outreach events.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right.
So Dean made a amendment and I seconded it.
Okay.
I found.
So, we vote on that first.
So, um, all the, so we don't have to have a discussion on the amendment since it's already been, correct?
Yeah, we kind of have, yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor of the amendment that's on the floor? And can someone please just state what the amendment is? So we know what it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm asking that the, that the motion to approve the, the trip be, be amended. To include a qualification that our approval be qualified or conditioned on there being the, whatever legal requirement. Well, legally required insurance be in place. That, I don't mean that, I don't mean that verbatim, but you're getting the flavor. Whatever insurance we need, let's have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's the amendment. And so all those in favor of the amendment that's on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. All those in favor of the motion that has been amended. Which is to approve this robotic trip with making sure that all necessary insurance has been taken care of. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Wow. All right. And I've learned some pulmonary things as well. You guys, you know, on behalf.
I'd like to say something to the team. It, it says on their website that this is going to be the battle to determine the best in the West. So we will obviously be the best in the East, no matter what, right?
Thank you, Rita.
Good luck.
And, and on behalf of the Board of Education, good luck, guys. And I would love to have you guys come back and tell us about, about the event. That would be really cool. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we'll definitely get some kids back to them.
Most certainly.
Appreciate that.
With pictures, with pictures.
All right, and I'm, I'm gonna move us on to number five. And the motion is to approve the revised electives at Grotton Middle School. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, is there any more discussion? That we've had or any more questions that got had in the past forty five minutes? Hearing none? All those in favor of to approve the revised electives at Grotton Middle School, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. It is eight forty two. There's, there's actually been a couple of things that are not correct on number one, which is the Board of Education meeting schedule. I know that we need to have it, but we only have policy down. It's meeting is the first of the month. And we don't have the other committees. And I am just wondering if I, if we could get this motion tabled. Even if we have to have a special vote on it so that we can get it to the town, just so that we can have a little bit more conversation. Specifically also, since we have a referral item to talk about how many meetings we were going to have. It makes sense that we kind of combined the two. So I'm gonna ask for it to be tabled. And all those in favor of the motion to table. Agenda item number one, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried and that has been tabled. Liz, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute today. Sorry about that. If you're moving number two, please.
To recognize October second, twenty twenty one as National Custodian Day. And to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the custodial staff.
Can I have a second?
That's me.
All right, Andrea, is there any discussion on this?
Just want to say absolutely extra thank you for, to our custodial staff. They are, hands involved with everything. And we just really wanted to let them know how much we appreciate all their effort.
Liz, here, here, thank you.
I, I don't think anybody realized, realizes how much part of the education the custodial staff is.
Yeah.
Well, wait a minute. Some of us too, as a nurse, they are the utmost of importance to me. And I thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you, Rosemary. If I have no more discussion, all those in favor to, for the motion to recognize October seventh, second. Twenty twenty one as National Custodian Day and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the custodial staff, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. We're now down to number six. We had this discussion in September seven, in September. But through the good works of leadership from Jay, just to make sure that we have this on the books, that this is what we had come up with. This is the reason why we had this motion and this was also approved by our attorney. So the motion that's on the floor is to approve a salary increase for the superintendent of schools for the contract term July first, twenty twenty one. To June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, as aligned with the central office staff salary increase. Can I have a second to that? I've got Andrea, do we have discussion?
Before we had this discussion.
We have. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that puts out with anybody who's listening, we have had this discussion, the discussion quite in depth. So.
Yes, we have. All right. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor to approve a salary increase for the superintendent of schools for the contract term July first, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Is aligned with central office staff salary increase, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Our number seven is going to have us. Go into executive session so that we can hear from the negotiations. And so what I am offering to the, to the, to the team is if we can just close out the rest of the meeting. So that people can hear the rest of the stuff that we have to say and that we would close out our, our session with. Coming out of executive session on number seven.
That's fine.
Well, are you talking about adjourning beforehand or adjourning after we come out of executive session?
We have to adjourn after we come out of, on the executive session.
Okay.
But to go through the rest of, the rest of the stuff and so that people are not waiting for us to go in and out of executive session.
That's cool.
Okay. All right. So letters of communication, Andrea?
Okay, I have two things. The first one is that Jason and Peter Filardi's series Chapel Weight is, is being aired on Epix now. Jason and Peter both graduated from Fitch High School. And I had Peter, I'm sorry, I had Jason in, in eighth grade. And the other thing is, which, which is Martin Luther King scholar is Elviani Quiraz. And we're going to be having our virtual celebration of all scholars on Thursday, October twenty first. And that will be streamed or I don't even, I guess you go to our site and there's a link to it. So I'm hoping that people will participate in that. It's at six o'clock.
Liz?
Um, nothing. Not heard anything.
Rita?
We had quite a few communications from the public, which I really appreciate. And I believe you answered them, Kim, which is our protocol. And. I wanted to say I had the pleasure of going to the first day of school at the Mystic River Magnet School. And it was great to see the DJ, who was the art teacher, the music playing, the happy faces behind those little muscles, smiling eyes. And the teachers, it was just wonderful. And I had a quick little tour of the school. It's beautiful. And I can't wait for the official tour that we'll have. So. And I'm sure Thames River was exactly the same. They're beautiful schools.
Thank you, Rita. Jay?
I believe I received the same communications as everyone else with regard to busing. And I did receive a concern from a parent about the cancellation of the pep rally at the high school. But I understand that since then, Principal Keller has shared his reasoning behind that cancellation. Also, I received. A direct thank you from one of the bus drivers for Ernie Koshmeters and his teams. Sending cookies over to the STA drivers last week. So that's one hardworking team to another. And we appreciate them both.
Thank you, Jay. Dean?
Same communications. And I've heard quite a lot from my daughter.
Rosemary?
I've also had these similar communications and I attended. A GAF meeting as well as a Sound Community Services. Board meeting, so as well.
Rita?
Well, we received a, a late email from the superintendent. About how congratulations to the Grotton School District on your FY twenty twenty one DODEA MSAP grant award. So I just wanted to mention it again. And Susan, could you just tell us about how much that is again?
So that is under one million. I think it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for five years. That was the one that Shannon was describing to you all last meeting.
Yes.
And we're really super excited. We know, we knew it was in the final stage, but we got the official word and I forwarded it to you and I got it like right before the meeting. So.
Yeah. Not everybody hears the COW meetings, but they'll tune into this one. Yeah, not everybody hears the COW meetings, but they'll tune into this one, so I wanted to.
Thank you.
This is wonderful. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I, I wondered if I, I didn't hear anything about the Blue Ribbon School in this.
Oh, that's right, too. We didn't do that.
I know, I didn't mention the Blue Ribbon.
Yeah.
That's another positive that it came forth. So our Mary Morrison was notified last year. That they were nominated to receive the Blue Ribbon, so they had to go through an application process. So Principal Minor and Ada Allen and the staff at Mary Morrison. Really, it was like a professional development going through to identify, you know, how they were able to get excellence. With regard to closing the achievement gap. So in that work and application, it came, you know, it was really from the Secretary of Education. Who is our own Miguel Cardona. And, you know, we, we were notified through the Performance Office. And because most of our students went to Thames River and many of our teachers and staff. That we were able to keep the same coding of the school. And then they, Thames River will be able to be honored with the Blue Ribbon, but I might have to tie a Blue Ribbon on both schools. You know, but very proud. This is the second school in our district in the past five years to receive a Blue Ribbon. And they both really have high military populations, which are very transient. So to be able to close the gap with people who are like my own life, eight schools in twelve years, you know. Is really, really exceptional. So very proud.
Susan, could you just tell the public how difficult it is and how few schools each year become a Blue Ribbon School?
I mean, it's. There were only four in the state of Connecticut.
Yeah.
And, and this is kind of typical, Connecticut is a smaller state. But, you know, and, and we got a listing of all the different schools, and we'll be invited to Washington to meet. The Secretary of Education. And, you know, I think there's all kinds of events that they host, so I'm looking forward. And of course, we'll be inviting Principal Minor to come with me. Ada Allen is now the Assistant Principal. At Thames, and so she may be joining, so we can invite a couple of staff members. And I would, and I will be.
That would be, that would be nice to have on our website, so that.
Yes, I can do that. I now have the official permission to put up the Blue Ribbon.
Thank you very much. Liz, did you have anything more?
I'm sorry, but, you know, everybody's saying they're getting communications, and I just, I'm going to ask Susan, I don't know if. Or maybe I should send Clint a note. I'm not getting anything. And it's not that, you know, I mean, that I get nothing. It's, I just haven't gotten anything, and I'm wondering, you know, why?
Well, I usually send it to the Board of Ed, so I'll double check with Clint to make sure you're on there. I know with Dr. Akram.
I get the Board of Ed stuff. I got your stuff. But I mean, any other parent communications or things, I'm not getting anything. And so, you know, I, I want people to know I'm here.
So maybe, so maybe that needs to be, so maybe we need to have that be checked out by the technology. Jay?
Yes.
Yeah, Liz, I did notice in some of the communications I received, not all board members received it. So the public can pick and choose who they want to, to write to. In fact, I received one today that was directly to me, because I did make a statement at the last meeting. That people that have concerns, you know, feel free. And so they did. So, yeah, not everybody knows the shortcut to, to, to get. The entire board. One email address. So sometimes they pick and choose.
So, and Liz, what, you might get it after I respond, because I tend to always respond to the whole board. Like I just, that's.
Right. All right. I just wanted to, I just feel like I'm out of the loop.
Uh, no, we're not out of the loop. All right, so I'm going to be moving, Rosemary, we heard from you. I think that that's all that's left for board members. I, I received the same. I was going to talk about Blue Ribbon, and congratulations on the DODEA. So I'm going to have us move on to future meeting dates before we go into our, our last agenda items.
I don't see anything here for curriculum.
There isn't anything on the list for curriculum that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I missed that. Are we on the referral list?
We are on, we are on future meeting dates, the last page.
Attachment number six.
Thank you.
Pete, or Dr. Piazza and I are going to meet on the fourth. To set, set, set an agenda and select a date.
Okay, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I stole your thunder. With Blue Ribbon. I'm sorry.
So the suggested agenda items?
I have one for policy. I'd like to take a look at that policy that we're laboring over tonight and see if we could, you know, amend the language to. Obviate what we went through tonight.
Yeah, I think also we would have been alleviated if we had all that information ahead of time. But I will put, I will put it on the agenda for policy for them to review the field trip.
Jason.
Jay?
So, not so much maybe an agenda item, but, but Susan, could, could, could you speak with Clint? About putting the, the Board of Ed Distribution email list on our page. So that people can just write to everybody all at once, just click, and, and everybody will get it.
Sounds like a great idea.
Then they can have the option, how, how they want to do it.
It's even difficult to get to the Board of Ed's page, I find. But maybe that's just me. You have to kind of go through a lot. We're under teachers and staff or something.
It's very, it's not so user friendly at times. Maybe that really needs to be.
Well, maybe he can take a look at that.
Yeah.
So it's not like, you know, having a difficult time navigating it.
It is.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, he's already been here a month. Why hasn't he completely revamped the website?
He's been very busy.
All right, so I am, I'm going to move us forward, and I'm going to entertain us going into executive session.
Motion.
I'm making, I'm making a motion for us to go into executive session.
Second.
A point of order.
Yeah, and I just finished my motion.
The, the law requires, requires the movement to specify the reason, the basis for going into executive session.
Can you, can you let me finish my motion, and I would be more than happy to do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard it seconded, so.
I, and I didn't accept a second.
Okay.
Um, so it, the motion is to go into executive session to. To ratification of the Grotton School Custodian Maintenance Association contract period from July first, twenty twenty-one. To June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And I would like to invite the Superintendent Susan Austin, and did Mr. Knight leave?
He's here.
I'm here.
And I would like to invite Mr. Knight. And so I am now the co-host. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, you are.
Okay, and so you're going to put us into executive session, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and then it allows me to have us, I can then get us out of this, or we can just leave that meeting and.
Each of you can just return.
Okay, all right. And then you're going to be there waiting for us, or yes?
No, I think you have to let me know to come back.
All right. All right. All right, so if you can move us into, have we, have we had a second to that emotion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor that we're going to go into executive session for purposes of ratification, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Right, abstain, motion has passed. Mark, if you could do your magic, that would be great.
Okay.
Mark, can you record?
I'm recording now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So go ahead, Rita.
Oh, there, in, in negotiations with the Grotton Schools Custodians and Maintains. We, part of that group are also the computer technicians, and the secretaries have joined that association also. So their contract, it's all together, and it runs four years, like you said. June live first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor to approve the ratification of the Grotton Schools Custodian Maintenance Association contract. For the period of July first, twenty twenty, twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain? This motion has carried.
Say good night, Gracie.
Good night.
I'll see you tomorrow.